Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for today's invocation, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just very brief comments today. I hope that all of you here and all of my colleagues had a very wonderful holiday season, and I hope that everybody's ready to work. We have some serious challenges that we're going to be facing this year, and I hope that we face those challenges with dignity and respect and understanding and compromise. We're going to have an interesting year. Let's get started. Let's roll our sleeves up and let's get busy. Thank you all.
Roll your sleeves.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. Our council members thank you all for being here today. Now, as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that you turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items six to nine relate to the same project and can be considered together for West Center Village located southeast of 204th Street and West Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to MU District. Item seven, a resolution to approve the final plat for West Center Village. B is communication opposition. C is documentation received during the December 11th, 2018 city council meeting. Item eight, a resolution to approve the West Center Village subdivision agreement. Item nine, an ordinance to approve the West Center Village mixed-use district development agreement. B, C, and D are amendments proposed by the developer.
The public hearings have been held on items numbers six through nine. If there are any questions, the council will call you up and answer any questions that the council may have for you, but this is up, subject for a vote today because we've already gone through the public hearing. So with that, council members, are there any questions or?
A second.
Moved and seconded to move to approve items six to eight. There are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through eight are approved, seven to zero.
I'd like to approve amendments, move to approve amendments B, C, and D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to, for, on item number nine, amendments B, C, and D. There are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Nine is amended. Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 10 and 11 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Sagewood Ridge located northwest of 180th and 4th Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, a resolution to approve a request for a waiver to the present development zone specifications of the urban development element of the City of Omaha master plan for this property. Item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Sagewood Ridge.
Public hearing agenda items numbers 10 and 11 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Mark Johnson. I address 11440 West Center Road. I'm appearing today on behalf of the applicant, just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve items 10 and 11. There are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10 and 11 are approved, seven to zero. Item 12, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Waterford Crossing, replat 27, located northeast of 156 and Ida Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Happy New Year. Good to see you all. Brent Beller, 1144 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the project applicant, Dragon Storage LLC. With me today is Mike Willniak and Brian Ritter, project developers, along with Randy Kuzek with Lampre Nielsen, the project engineers. Before you today is a preliminary plat and an amendment to an existing use development agreement. This site sits at the corner of 156th and Ida Street. This is a 10-acre mixed-use development area, subject to a mixed-use development agreement. What's before today is an amendment to that mixed-use development agreement. We're modifying the site plan, which I'll get into here in a moment. Just a little bit to talk about the site, to the west of us is the Waterford Crossing subdivision agreement. To the south is, Brimstone Capital's currently developing, maybe has already built some apartments. To the west is a future school site. To the north, again, is the Waterford Crossing subdivision. And then to the east, there is actually an existing Casey's gas station going in here. This, this site effectively is the mixed-use development area, which is subject to that mixed-use development agreement, which is what we are modifying today in addition to our preliminary plat. One of the things I want to touch base on is just the elevation changes. We, we have had a healthy amount of discussion with neighbors, just because this is a storage facility, or Lot 1 is going to be a storage facility. We wanted to make sure there was a lot of public outreach to that. We've actually had three neighborhood meetings, one back in July of last year, and then we actually had two meetings in October before the planning board, just to make sure that we reached out, made sure everyone was cognizant. And obviously with these folks, being so close to this development, we wanted to make sure they had a, they had an opportunity to be heard and us to answer their questions. So one of the things I wanted to touch on before we get too far is just the elevation. So this is, maybe I should lift those up a little bit. These homes effectively to the east sit higher. So the, the homes are up here. There's about a 20-foot elevation change down to where this area right here, this is going to be Lot 1, and I'll show you that on our preliminary plat here in a moment. This is where the storage facility will be, and then we'll have office and retail projected up here along Ida Street. So as, as it sits, effectively, these, these homes would be looking out onto the top of what's going to be the storage facility. There's going to be a, a good amount of landscaping in here as well. That's compliant with Urban Design Guidelines. But again, I, I want to be mindful of that because we got a lot of questions from neighbors about what people are staring at, and we're always, you know, as developers, they're always very cognizant of the uses and what people stare at. Currently, it's, it's a vacant field, and it's been that way for 13 years, which is probably a good segue into what could be done now. So this, what I'm showing you now is the existing site map that's in the mixed-use development agreement, which we are many. So back in 2005, when this project initially came forward, this was what the site was going to be. It was going to be a proposed retail, a small retail facility with mixed retail. As you can see, there's parking lots, bank, office, a true mixed-use center. For whatever reason, I'm not a broker, I'm not in, I'm not in the industry. It's never come to fruition. It's not been the retail hotspot that was initially planned, and the market is telling us that there's another use for this site. Mike and Brian and their team are proposing a new design to bring a storage facility in here, which could be the impetus for future, you know, development along Ida Street and maybe a, a much reduced retail-type feel here. There's a couple of things, though, I wanted to highlight about this plan that were not changed because this also came up in our discussions with the neighborhood, and that's the, the eighth mile access here on Ida Street. This access, this cut into Ida Street, we're not changing. This has to be there. The, the length of this cut, again, is determined by the city design traffic guidelines. And again, we bring that up because it is close to these, to these neighbors, to the east, their backyards, and we got a lot of questions about that. But the reality is, is we can't change anything about it. The site plan also talked about having traffic flow behind these buildings, and this is both pedestrian, folks that frequent the center, but also it was designed to be trucks, dumpster trucks, sort of heavy industrial-type traffic that would have been going back here behind these buildings. I only bring that up because, again, we had a lot of questions from neighbors as to why, and you'll see in a moment, we're actually extending 154th Avenue all the way to 100, or to Ida Street, why we had that access there. It was always intended, and in working with the city, they're requiring us to bring 154th Avenue down. And then finally, the, the, the other access point onto Iowa Street, this is a roundabout, so folks will enter and exit along Ida as well. So that's what could be there today. If somebody wanted to come do this plan, they could do it without any other approvals. And so what we're doing is we're proposing to amend this plan with this plan. So as part of our preliminary plat, we'll have four lots. Lot 1, I'm sorry, five lots actually with an outlaw. Lot 1 is the storage facility. This is going to be about 200 units, 50 of which is climate-controlled. There's no outdoor storage here. Everything is enclosed. Up here, this is to the north, remember, this is to the south, west, east, so the residential is an outlot. We're going to work with SID 441, which is this neighborhood, to making sure that this is kind of a public gathering space, a park-like setting. And then we're going to extend 154th Avenue south down to Ida Street. As you can see, here's that entrance point that I talked about on the original plan. Here's that entrance point that I talked about in the original plan, and this has always been vehicular access egress going through there. These lots, lots 2, 3, and 4, are projected to be office, think a bank, daycare, sort of light office use. We don't plan to develop this, but as part of our plan, we have to propose a use. Dragon Storage, obviously, as their name alludes to, they only do storage facilities. So they will develop this project, and they will spearhead all the public improvements. So utilities, roadways, lighting, sidewalk, everything that goes into a development, Dragon Storage will, will be the impetus to doing all of that. The other thing that we were very mindful is, is landscaping. Obviously, there'll be extensive landscaping along 154th Avenue. We met with the neighbors. Obviously, when it's first installed, it'll be small, but over time, it will grow. The other thing that we did was, in terms of open space, plaza requirements, building design, siding, site, I'm sorry, site design, lighting, everything else that we're doing complies with the mixed-use development agreement. We're not touching that in any other respect. And in fact, the only other waiver we actually requested was to move, to shrink this Lot 1 a little bit so that we could take 154th Avenue and shift it a little bit farther to the west to kind of give somewhat of a buffer to the, the folks who live over here. And so we reduced that setback to 25 feet, which I believe it's 30 feet. And again, we just, we did that so that we could give a little bit of, of a buffer between these residences and the street that's going to be installed. So with that, we, we've had extensive neighborhood outreach. We've met, we appreciate the, the planning department's work with us on this and their approval for this. In addition to the planning board's approval, we're here for any other questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton.
Well, first of all, Mr. Beller, I want to say, I haven't received one email objecting to these, to this storage. And I know Councilman Festerson and I have this issue with the number of storage places that are going up. So your outreach and the meetings that you had with the neighbors, you must have done an outstanding job because in the same area, we had massive objections to very high-end apartments that were being built with fences around them. And I mean, people came out, there were hundreds of people at a meeting objecting to really what I would consider beautiful apartments.
Sure.
Not your normal complex and $1,000, $1,500 apartments, but not one objection have I received for Dragon Storage units at 156 and Ida. This is not what I want to see go in there. I mean, I, just as a personal note, we're seeing these storage places go up all over. And then when I see the amount that you have, it's not just even a building that looks like an office building, but then says storage. Are these the garage style?
These are...
Do you have any pictures of what they're going to look like?
I, I do, in fact, but I don't like showing these photos because these don't show the design guidelines and the colors and the stone facade that we have to have. But I mean, these are photos of another facility that Dragon Storage does, and I don't know, Mike, if we have updated ones, but I'll, I'll use these for now. Well, maybe I don't. Yeah, I do. Here we go. So here are, you know, this is, this is the office-type building. You know, it's a stone facade on the top, wood facade on the, on the side, and then shake shingles. I, I don't think we're going to have steel roofs. It will be steel. But these are, you know, none of our entrance ways, none of our garages will, you know, face outward. Everything is inward-looking, so as you drive along 154th Avenue, you're not going to be staring at a row of garages. Like here, you know, these are your, this is what they look like. From the inside, from the outside, you're going to see the facade and what's compliant with the design guidelines.
Okay.
But, you know, the reality is...
Well, apparently, you've done a great job. I, I mean, I can't, I'm not going to vote no when I haven't received any objections from anybody that lives around there. And I'm just telling you that whatever you've done and however you're working with the neighbors, apparently, they're satisfied with what you're doing. So I really hope there is a lot of follow-through, and I'm glad that you've moved that road over, and you're going to put, I assume you've moved that road over so that you can put extra trees and landscaping.
That's, that's exactly the idea. I mean, and Mike and his team should be commended. I mean, Mike went out there personally, met with neighbors, walked the site, explained. I mean, there, a lot of the questions was what you just asked, which is, are you going to follow through? Do you clean your site? And Mike, you know, looked him in the eye and said, "I'm your guy. I'm doing this. It's not somebody else. I'm a local guy. I have local businesses. I'm going to be the guy in charge." And for whatever reason, I, I don't know if that was the reason why you didn't get a lot of calls, and maybe it was the other meeting.
Not, not one. I mean, so, Mike, I mean, hats off to you for being able to, I have no objections from any of the neighbors. I do have to say that I, I do get concerned, especially when you have those strips, that 20 years from now, we're, we're going to have an eyesore on our hands. It, it may look really good for the next 10 years, but what I hope it doesn't do is that that's what kind of brings the area down 20 years from now. If somebody else, you sell it to somebody else who maybe doesn't care as much.
You hope landscaping helps with that?
And that's, that's what I, yeah, that's what I can only, only hope. But, so again, I, I'm going to be supportive, and this may be the first storage unit. I mean, right there, off a neighborhood, right close to a neighborhood that we haven't, that the council has not had their emails blown up, and nobody came down, and nobody's objected. So kudos to how you've done it.
Thank you.
All right, so I guess, it's not even, pardon, it's not even, normally, this is really hard for me to do, but I'll go ahead and do a motion to approve.
Is there a second? I'm sorry.
He did?
No, I haven't, I've closed the public hearing, but we haven't...
You asked for opponents, though, and nobody...
I did, and there were no opponents. Yeah. So it's time for, this is a motion.
I did a motion. Somebody will second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve item 12. We have another council member, council member Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll just make a comment to, along the same lines as Council Member Melton, not necessarily specifically to this case, and I, I think it does appear you did a nice job of engaging folks and working on the appearance and the landscaping and such. But I did want folks to know, we did have a kind of a long conversation about this just this morning. Storage facilities in general within the planning committee of the city council with the planning department, because we've all experienced from time to time, these facilities going up in all parts of the city and causing neighborhoods concern. And I think part of the answer is people just have too much stuff, and that's why they are going up. But our conversation was along the lines of how do we better handle them when they do go through the process or seek approvals from Planning Board and City Council. I have one in my district right now, right in the middle of the Florence Business District, which really shouldn't go there, but is allowed to go there, given its current zoning. So the conversation was more along the lines of how might the city better handle that within the zoning code and/or special use permit process to have more control over when and how that occurs. And Mr. Fansel, not to put you on the spot, but if you might just give a, maybe a 30-second summary for folks of our conversation today and, and what that entails.
Sure, yeah. Dave Fansel, City Planning. Like Councilman Festerson said, we, the planning, council planning committee met this morning. I think we discussed a number of issues with storage units in a number of different locations, and where we have seen applications such as this one before you today, or others that don't necessarily require city council approval where zoning is in place that makes it allowed by right. So I think there's some further conversations to have, and maybe there's some ways in the zoning code that we could treat them differently going forward.
Thanks. And that was the nature of our conversation today, and I, for one, am interested in pursuing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could you put the map up that showed where the school's going to be?
You bet.
And... Do you know whether that's going to be a high school, elementary, middle school?
I, Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. I personally don't.
It's a new high school, which will probably be 60, 70, 80 million dollars. Now, where is it compared to the site that you, where's the high school located on this site?
I don't know which parcel, but I know it's over here.
Okay. So as I see this, we're going to put, I'm assuming OPS and the high school will run 60, 70, maybe 80 million dollars. We're going to be putting a high school there, and, and I see how close this is to the high school. I understand that there may not have been anybody, or apparently, nobody's complained about it, but I see a lot of empty land around there. I have a feeling of more and more houses and buildings were there, and I'm not talking about businesses, that you may have heard or from more people. I'm just concerned that we, that the Omaha Public School is going to be investing a pretty good chunk of money into a high school there, which will attract people from all over, and that intersection is going to be probably a pretty busy intersection. I know there will not be as much traffic because of the, the storage, because it does, because a lot of people could be coming and going there like it would be in a business. But I, I am concerned because I've been told we have lots of parcels of land in the City of Omaha that have been proposed for different kinds of businesses, but apparently, we don't have enough businesses to fill those sites. So we're going now to things such as storage units. I know we need storage units because we've had a couple just recently in my area. That's why I think we really need to take a serious look on where we place storage units. I know people want them. I know that being close to the homes is, is a plus for those individuals. But I just see that the potential of that part of town with, with a big high school, and you're going to have traffic from all over coming there, and then you could be looking at, I know the backside of the buildings, but it, it just doesn't seem to make that corner work in my eyes. And, but I will go along with Councilwoman Melton, if, if there's nobody complaining about it, it's pretty hard to vote no about it. But I also say, if I see a lot of vacant land around there, you know, but that's, I'm just hoping as a council, we start taking a look at some, where some of these storage units are, and to make sure that when we do put them up, that when we put buffers around them, that we, actually, the trees we put there, you don't have to wait 10 years or five years, or big enough that they cause immediate, a positive effect on the, the environment and also on the aesthetics of one of those places. I will be voting for it, but I just think that we need to be aware of these future corners throughout the city because apparently, many of us have too many more items than we need, so we have to find a place, and I am guilty of that. I could, I won't even tell you how many units I have. It's scary. Scary, sad. I'm not a hoarder. I, well, maybe I am. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 12. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 13 and 14 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Meader Meadows replat 1, located at 7633 Dutch Hall Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 13, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Meader Meadows replat 1. Item 14, a resolution to approve the final plat for Meader Meadows replat 1.
Public hearing agenda items numbers 13 and 14 are today. Proponents, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, Douglas Streason, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is kind of a technical issue that we replatted to solve a driveway easement. With that, I'd entertain any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 13 and 14. There are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 13 and 14 are approved, seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Falling Waters North, located south of HWS Cleveland Boulevard and west of 198th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Brian Emrick, 2129 South 39th Street, Omaha. DLR Group here on behalf of the applicant, just to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero. Item 16 and 17 can be considered together for a property located at 3214 L Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone this property from R435 District to CC District. Item 17, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing agenda item number 16 and 17 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 16 and 17. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 16 and 17 are approved, seven to zero. Item 18, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow large group living in an R1 district, large lot located at 2315 South 168th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Erin Render, 17113 Lakewood Drive, Bellevue, 68123. Just here to answer any questions representing Comfort Care Homes.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve the Ainsworth and Beverly Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 2230 and 2236 Jones Street, and amount up to $285,000.
Public hearing agenda item number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This TIF project plan involves a comprehensive rehab of two existing four-story brick apartment buildings that are located in the southwest portion of downtown. To get you oriented, we're here, the project is directly west of the Drake Core Apartments, which are here, and it's these two buildings there. The Ainsworth and Beverly are brick historic buildings. They had formerly 74 apartment units with the comprehensive rehab. Between the two buildings, the number of units will be reduced to 33. You can see the buildings fill the site. This picture gives you the site and surroundings fairly well. So there is no parking on site, but they are being rezoned to CBD. They're reducing the number of units from 74 down to 33. And the owner, developer, Anderson Apartments LLC, Dave Palladino, manager, also owns and controls some of the properties in the area, so there is parking available. Total project cost is $3.2 million, a little bit north of that. The amount of TIF requests is $285,000. The project meets the required criteria of the city's TIF program. It complies with the city's comprehensive plan. It's a good, good investment in an area of downtown where we want to see an investment. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
My name's David J. Palladino. My address is 2702 Douglas, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Thank you, Council. Mark Von Drosick, 211 South 37th Street.
Thank you, Council, Mark Von Drosick, 211 South 37th Street. First of all, Mr. Palladino does not live at 2702 Douglas Street, and there are some people here who are going to give their addresses to you, who may incur behavior from their landlords for speaking out on these issues, who are going to give you their addresses. I just wanted to point that out. Council, my, work with my organization, Omaha Tenants United, has brought me into extreme contact with this, Mr. Palladino, over the last six months. It must be said clearly and plainly that Mr. Palladino is a profiteer. He makes excessive profit on the services that he provides to his tenants, and being a profiteer is the textbook definition of what we would call a slumlord. I am here today to draw a line in the sand for this city council, because this city council has been unwilling to do that so far. We've had a lot of talk in this city this past year from Yale Park, we get some other people who are going to talk about some things regarding those Karen immigrants. I want to say that I am personally here today to speak on behalf of four different Karen immigrants who were Palladino previous tenants, who have asked me to speak to you today, because they are from a culture and a place where they cannot trust the government to uphold their end of the bargain, and they certainly can't trust local property owners to uphold their end of the bargain. And they were not able to be here, they did not want to be here, but I will enter into the record, Mr. Palladino's papers that he has sent them, and the collections notices that he has sent them over time. Mr. Palladino does not interact with his tenants well. He does not put forth an honest effort to interact with his tenants, to communicate with them in any way, shape, or form, and when he does interact with his tenants, it's extremely aggressive, demeaning, and oppressive. One tenant in particular that I spoke to up in Florence, Councilman, who we are no longer in contact with, because she was so impoverished in her situation that she has no method of communication for us to get a hold of her, and her doctor ordered her, her and her five children, to leave Mr. Palladino's home as soon as possible, and they did that, and we lost contact with that tenant. That tenant was experiencing sewage leaking up into the, backing up into the basement every single time they used the apartment. Mr. Palladino refused to clean, to fix the problem, or to even admit that the problem was his to fix. In the information that I have here involving the four Karen immigrant families, you'll see evidence to suggest that Mr. Palladino keeps every single deposit that he takes from a tenant, and then also charges in excess of $500 in damages fees for absolutely absurd things, countertop replacement, entire appliance replacement. Every single one of these papers has a $300 cleaning fee on it, and, which I guess, I mean, I'm supposed to believe that it costs in excess of $800, including the deposit, to clean every single apartment that Mr. Palladino ever flips to a new tenant. On top of information that we have from all the different tenants that we've worked for, that would suggest that Mr. Palladino doesn't clean up apartments before he rents them to new tenants, he simply moves people into new apartments as quickly as he can. There's a man sitting behind me who's been a long-term tenant at Mr. Palladino, who we helped on several different occasions deal with Mr. Palladino's business. We helped him move out of his apartment after Mr. Palladino and his henchmen attempted to illegally evict and intimidate the person into leaving the premises early. We were able to help the gentleman move out of his apartment, clean the apartment, move all his things into a new apartment, and we thought we were done. Mr. Palladino then sent him a collections letter for over $1,000 for things that we had patently done for the tenant to help him clean up, like paint the walls, take the garbage out, simple things, things that Mr. Rashad behind me, Mr. Sevier, was charged hundreds, over $1,000 worth, and he will give you more details for that. One final thing that involves Mr. Sevier and his story that is continuing to right now, Mr. Palladino is either completely incompetent in running his business, or he is, like I said, a profiteer. And the evidence, one thing I want to point to for evidence to suggest that, is we went into Mr. Palladino's office with Mr. Sevier, with a large group of people, and we behaved ourselves, we negotiated with Mr. Palladino's lawyer, and they wrote off the entire $1,000 check after reviewing pictures that they themselves had took, which proved that their charges of trash and damage were false in the first place. I'll say that again, their own pictures prove that their claims of damage were false. And then, months after, we had helped Mr. Sevier clear those debt charges, get a written statement from Mr. Palladino's lawyer that he was going to get a check for his deposit back, which he did, months later, Mr. Sevier receives a collections notice for that $1,000. So the gears are already rolling in Mr. Palladino's business, they're already rolling to exploit every single person that he comes into contact with. Did Mr. Sevier receive a collections notice because they just forgot to update his computer system, and they're not good at checking their computer systems and going through that? Or did Mr. Sevier receive another collections notice because Mr. Palladino is trying to exploit every single tenant who comes into contact with him? I think the answers are clear to these questions. I've heard a little bit of rumors this morning about the city council not being able to take these things into discussion, into consideration, when having this vote today, and I just want to say, that has got to be one of the absolutely most pathetic excuses I have ever heard from a body of government in regards to what it's doing. You do have the power, you have the power, if you, you can say you have gas today, and you're going to vote this down, you can do that. It's your decision, you can vote no today, you can and you should vote no to deny Dave Palladino this TIF funding, he doesn't deserve it. Where is the line in the sand that this government is going to draw? Are you ever going to draw that line in the sand? Thank you, Mr. Sevier.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Members of the council. My name is Sevier Rashad. I live at 2520 South 10th Street, and I'm happily to be where I am, and having not to deal with what I call a predatory landlord, meaning that he has taken advantage of those that are less fortunate to get into places that they would like to, whether it's being evicted from a property or what have you. When I rented from him, which was in 2017, I was there a year, I complained about not having a stove two days after being there. It took four months to get a stove in. Now, I'm on a fixed income, I'm disabled, so I ended up having to spend a lot of my money to nuke food, meaning put it in the microwave. Finally, I asked, okay, where is the stove? I was told, well, the stove is in Deboins. Okay, well, when will you guys be going to get it to bring it in? Well, we don't know, but if you want to, you can go get it. How am I going to go get it? I don't drive, so therefore I had to wait. Second thing, I'm glad you said, roll up your sleeves. Well, here are my sleeves. These are bedbug bites that I complained about, that nothing was done. Secondly, winter months came, had no heat. The radiators are the old radiators that I grew up seeing, they kind of go like this right here, and, you know what I mean? Had no heat, I had to go stay with other people, they would not come out to fix the heat, so I didn't know what to do, but I had to weather the storm. Going into this apartment building, which is, it was a house that was turned into apartment buildings, the stairs leading out, going to the back, which I stayed right there at the stairs going to the back, were so steep, I was fearful to go down those stairs every time I had to take my trash out. The third stair, which is the very top, I was fearful that would collapse. I did have pictures, still have pictures, of a railing that went down the back. The railing was tore off, there's a big hole in the wall where they were doing some work there. I ended up falling down that, I ended up going to the hospital, not once, not twice, not three times, four times. Once in the back, fearful, not going down there no more now, went out the front. As I, as you see, I'm on a cane, I'm going down these stairs, the railing comes off, I tumble down, go back again, give a call, when will this be fixed? Oh, we're going to get somebody out there. Okay. I feel because of my complaining about his irresponsibility and not being accountable was the reason that I received a letter stating, "You must move." Mind you, I've never been late on my rent, my rent was always paid on time, so why? Conclusion that I came up with, I'm complaining too much. So, after receiving this, this letter, I'm like, okay, give me a reason why, we'll go to Article 14. Article 14 talks about trash in the hallways. It's not my trash, you've got several people on this floor. Okay, you want me to move, I'll do that. Next thing I know, a guy comes by, dead knock, sticks a key in, and proceeds to come in. What are you doing? How are you just going to come in my, my home, and who are you? Well, Dave Palladino sent me over here. Did he give you the permission to come in my home without notice? By law, there's a 24-hour notice, I was not given that. Make the long story short, I called some colleagues of mine, and they came, helped me move the furniture out, we painted the room. Now, mind you, this is a facility, there's no bedroom, there's a living quarters, kitchen, bathroom, very small. I live by myself, no damage. Cleaned everything up. Made one mistake, I missed, or we missed, the refrigerator. Well, I get a letter stating that I can't get my deposit back, no reason why. Then, I get another letter stating, "You owe us for damages." So me and my colleagues went down there, and he was supposed to be there, he never showed, didn't care. As we were there, me and the young lady that works for him, she's supposed to be a lauder, me and her came to an agreement, the pictures that they showed, as this gentleman spoke upon, reflected that there was no damage. But as a breakdown, you want to charge me $500 to paint two rooms? You want to charge me $600 to clean a refrigerator? Come on. You really ought to just take advantage of people, and I am here today to speak out for those tenants that are unable to have a voice. I'm giving that voice this day. I do not feel that he should be granted what he's asking for, and he knows that he has 99% of the properties here in the Omaha area tied up. Now, I'm going to give you a true story.
Let me, before you, before you go on, let me ask, how many people are going to testify? Because we want to try and make it so that we can, so that we hear everybody.
Yes, sir.
And I don't want to make it really long, so after your story, if you would.
I'll make this very short.
Thank you.
There was a young lady who was looking for...
If one other thing, if I could get people to come, well, I don't know if you could get closer, can you? But I just wanted to get people closer, but you go ahead, I'm sorry, sir.
There was a young lady that was looking for the property that he had listed. I happened to be out on the porch asking her, you know, are you looking for a particular address, she had a little kid with her. First of all, the picture that he pointed, that he took and put it in a thrifty nickel, was not the house that he was trying to rent out. Address was the same, the home was totally different. This lady was in a coma for several months, her son was taken away from her because she was in a coma. She came out of that coma with this child, talked to Mr. Palladino about renting a property, he told her on several occasions, "We'll be there to meet you," never showed up. The lady was on, in the rain this particular day, waiting on him, she had a social worker with her. Social worker called, they're on their way, never showed up, and with that, I just want to say, thank you very much for allowing me this time to speak on those that are not able to speak upon, or for themselves, you guys have a happy New Year's.
Thank you. And if I could, for those of you who are going to speak, if you've heard someone say something already that, that, that has been said, you don't need to say it again, I think the council gets the picture of it, but I would like to hear from everyone who wants to testify today, so go ahead.
I have a letter for everyone in the city council, do I give that?
Yeah, would you give that to our clerk, please? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hannah Wyble, do I need to give my address?
Yes, please.
Okay, 2532 South 88th Street, and I am with the organization Restoring Dignity. We have been extensively involved with the Yale Park families that were displaced from their homes on September 20th. Since that time, we've been in close contact with all of the families and have arranged for 97 churches and organizations to sponsor and bring families the items they need in their new homes. The reason I am here speaking with you today is because I am concerned that the city is considering spending a quarter of a million dollars towards funding a housing project that will be owned and managed by Dave Palladino, and my reasons for concern are the following. Since 2012, I have been inside many of Dave Palladino's apartments, as I extensively volunteered to help provide refugees with essential home items that they needed. Since that time, I have observed dozens of units, dozens upon dozens of units, that had significant cockroach, bedbug, mouse, and rat infestations. I have seen entire buildings where none of the hallways have any inside lighting that is working, people coming home from work at night have had to use flashlights to navigate to their apartment. I have seen plumbing issues that are so bad that all of the sinks and the bathtub in the apartment were filled with dirty water and would not drain. I have seen dead rats in apartment laundry rooms and have observed furnaces with no air filters. I have also listened as family after family told me that they submitted maintenance requests, some even brought their own interpreters down to the main office to help them communicate their concerns, and yet repairs were extremely slow to happen or never did. So, when I watched as the Yale Park families moved into many of the Palladino units, I wondered if issues like the ones I had seen in the past would come up, and the answer is yes, they did. Of the nearly 100 Yale Park families, 37 reached out to us for help in getting issues in their new homes fixed. Of these 37 families, 22 lived in Palladino units. Of the 22 Palladino units, the following issues were found upon move-in. Three of the 22 had major electrical issues, three of the 22 had mold, 11 of the 22, which is 50%, were infested with cockroaches, five of the 22 were infested with bedbugs, 10 of the 22, which is 45%, were infested with mice, eight of the 22 had water leaks or plumbing issues that negatively impacted sanitation, four of the 22 had major appliance issues that negatively impacted sanitary cooking and food storage, four had fire safety issues such as broken smoke detectors, and four of the 22 had issues with their heating and cooling systems. These issues were all present upon move-in, meaning that the Yale Park families moved into units that had code violations that were already present, 52 code violations, to be exact. Housing issues for the remaining 63 families remain unknown at this point, but will be known soon, as we are beginning comprehensive housing quality assessments this week for all of the Yale Park families. And these are only 22 families who reached out to us. How many other families are suffering in similar conditions that these, but do not know who to reach out to or how to get help? While I wish I could say that my concerns stop here, they do not. Last month, a young refugee woman brought a letter to me from Palladino's office, she was distraught because she was being charged $2,000 in move-out fees for damages to her apartment. We went down and spoke with the staff at Palladino's office, reviewed pictures, and were able to get her bill brought down to $45, since the vast majority of the charges were unsubstantiated. While she is happy that her bill dropped almost $2,000, she is upset because her credit dropped over 100 points, because the bill was sent to collections. This is a huge impact on someone, especially someone living in poverty, you can't get a loan for anything with, with credit that has dipped that low. And just this morning, I received another letter from a young refugee couple who are being charged almost $1,000 for move-out charges. I'm almost done. Beyond my own observations, in 2018, it was reported to the Omaha Refugee Task Force Housing Subcommittee that the apartments off of 44th and Coming Street, which are owned by Mr. Palladino, were completely infested with cockroaches and mice. One blind refugee tenant reported not being able to sleep at night due to the mice and cockroaches that could be heard running over the wood floors. In conclusion, if the city... In conclusion, if the city of Omaha provides Dave Palladino with TIF funding for a new housing development, there are certain requirements that should absolutely be mandated. Number one, the city of Omaha should randomly inspect Palladino's current units to make sure that he is keeping them up to code and in good working order. If his current units check out, then and only then should TIF funding be provided. How a landlord maintains his current properties is a strong indicator of how he will maintain his future properties. Taxpayers should not be footing the bill for ill-maintained apartment buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Angie Salau Phillips. I'm at 3082 Martin Avenue. I just wanted to come today. I work for my brother's small business here in Omaha, and we do paint and cleaning. Kind of, uh, most of our services come from turnovers, which is where, uh, when an apartment is empty, we go in, we paint it, we clean it, we make it ready, prepare it for its next home, its next, uh, resident. So, um, about five years ago, I'm starting five years ago, but I promised to make it quick. About five years ago, when I was pregnant with my son, I had gone through a tour, um, of houses of, uh, Dave Palladino's. And we were, I can't remember the exact amount, I think we were set up to see five or six. After the first three that we went into, they were, like, you could open cupboards and there were roaches scattering, and, um, so after three of those, and being told when we brought it up that it was just the type of people that he rented to were dirty. The type of people that he rented to were the reason that these homes were cockroach-infested. We were looking at homes in North Omaha and East Benson. And so, we luckily were like, oh, we're not gonna rent from this guy, and we were able to avoid it. Through, over the past five years in Omaha, I hear several of my working-class friends, you hear lots of stories about Palladino. It's kinda just known in our neighborhood that he's a slumlord. Um, I happened to see a post on Facebook that detailed out, um, the amount actually that, uh, Mr. Rashad was charged. And as a cleaning, painting professional, it caught my eye. I thought, wow, there's $700 in charges to clean a one, a one-bedroom apartment? Which it, when I saw the pictures, it's not even one-bedroom. It's a studio or efficiency apartment. So I, I was very curious to see what costs $700 to clean a small apartment like that. Um, and so, um, I was able to join in the conversation that they had with Dave Palladino's lawyer. And I had printed out an estimate, um, from my job of what we would have given, and then made adjustments when I saw the pictures, the photo evidence that Dave Palladino's office had. And, um, to be clear, Dave Palladino was charging $200 to clean the refrigerator that Mr. Rashad spoke about. He was charging $200 to clean the stove, that, um, the pictures actually viewed were pretty clean. Um, and then, on top of that, $400, an additional $300 just for a cleaning of the efficiency apartment. So that's a total of $700. Our company would have charged at most 65. So I just wanted to come here today and as a, as a cleaning professional, just kinda show you the variances of what those charges are. Those are ridiculous amounts. There's no way it costs that much to clean that apartment. Um, it's, it, it's just unethical practices, and he's definitely taking advantage of folks that cannot afford to get lawyers and fight back against these charges. They get turned into collections, maybe they can't advocate for themselves. So I believe that the city of Omaha should deny Dave Palladino any assistance that would help him create more properties that he can then use to take advantage of working-class families such as myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents who wish to be heard? Next, please.
My name is Rosie Volkmar. I live at 2539 North 55th Street in Omaha.
Rosie, can I get you to tilt one of those microphones down so we can hear you better? Thank you, there you go.
How's this?
That's fine.
That's better. Okay, Rosie Volkmar, 2539 North 55th Street in Omaha. I'm a member of a church team that is sponsoring one of the Yale Park families that was displaced last year. This Corinne family that we are helping was relocated to one of Mr. Palladino's properties. Our team gathered new furniture for the family, and upon delivering it a day or two after they moved in, we were shocked to see mice running through the apartment. Since the family arrived there, we have been helping them to battle what seemed to us to be unsanitary living conditions, including roaches and rodents. At the time the apartment was rented by this family, the toilet was not functioning correctly. Cabinets, drawers, and the bathroom were not working. The stove had a broken handle, making that burner inoperable, and a vent covering was mangled and hanging off the wall. We were saddened to see our vulnerable neighbors being relocated to a place that appeared so unsanitary and ill-camped. Our team has been working with Restoring Dignity and Mr. Palladino to resolve these issues for months now, as our refugee friends simply do not speak English well enough or know how to communicate clearly these concerns to their landlords. Some of the issues have been resolved, but as of today, our refugee friend told us through an interpreter that she's still seeing mice in the apartment and that she, um, also is finding that the bugs remain. We will continue to address these health and safety issues with Mr. Palladino, but we believe our vulnerable neighbors deserve a safe and a habitable home. The family in, in this particular instance is a family who came here with a special medical need. They're, they have children who, who require medical treatments every month. I'm happy that we're able to help this one family. I have deep concern for the probably at least 100 other mostly immigrant families living in that same property, as I know that they must also be facing some of these same issues with rodents and bugs. But they likely may not have someone to advocate for them. They may not have a church lady who is making the calls. I ask that the city of Omaha do everything in its power to ensure that all landlords provide safe, inhabitable dwellings for all tenants, and especially for our most vulnerable neighbors. And just hearing Ms. Wyble's suggestion that this type of TIF funding should be awarded to landlords who prove that they are maintaining their current properties makes a lot of sense to me. And I thank you all for making a decision that is in the best interest of all Omaha renters and all of us taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Good afternoon, members of council. My name is Gloria Osterberry of Augustana Lutheran Church and the Housing Action Team of Omaha Together One Community. Today's discussion informs your decision about TIF funding for Mr. Palladino in the context of the larger question of how you will update the code governing Omaha's rental housing. Everyone we have talked to, a very diverse group, supports your desire that there never be another Yale Park like mass evacuation. Most landlords do a good job serving housing needs of their renters. A few do not, and are of deep concern to all. We thank those who have just now and will yet share stories from some of Mr. Palladino's tenants and the tenants themselves, or former tenants. Over the years, we have heard many similar stories. It is important that we all understand the needless suffering that goes on in many rental homes in Omaha. However, in the last year, we have also heard from agencies that work with Mr. Palladino and other landlords to house the homeless. So how does this work? Agency social workers inspect units landlords have available. Then the social worker often must give the landlord a list of what to fix before they will move families into the unit. That means if Mr. Palladino or another landlord wants the agency to pay the rent for several months, the owner has to meet basic housing standards. Agencies report that Mr. Palladino has the means, expertise, and the workers, and he does bring these units up to minimum standards the agencies demand. This raises a question. How do we reconcile these two different sets of stories, both true? The properties Mr. Palladino rents to low-income people have often been persistently substandard. On the other hand, he usually gets his properties up to the standard when working with homeless agencies. Same landlord, different behaviors. Our answer is that in both cases, Mr. Palladino meets the enforced standards. Without a complaint, the city enforces no minimum standards on rental property. And landlords often live by a rule that the Nebraska Supreme Court has articulated, quote, "Low-income tenants are reluctant to complain," end of quote. Mr. Palladino and others can make a business decision to ignore minimum standards that are not enforced. When homeless agencies enforce a standard, he makes the repairs. He knows he can depend on the agencies for rent payments. In each case, he does what the different systems require of him. The holistic support agencies provide their clients often helps them get a job and income to continue in housing they pay rent for. The stories you are hearing today are the inevitable result of a complaint-based and broken system. In the coming weeks, we are looking for the city council and mayor to propose changes to this system. We need a new set of rules that include periodic inspections. Not just a Band-Aid on the complaint-based system, but a new proactive system. With reasonable rent registration fees, the city could operate a cycle of inspections to enforce minimum standards in all rental units. Those inspections will markedly improve the quality of housing for many. If Kansas City, Council Bluffs, La Vista, and Carter Lake can enforce minimum standards, why can't Omaha? Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Hello, members, members of council. President, Mr. Gray, I'd like to thank you for your time. My name is Lucas Perez Lehe. I'm a member of Omaha Tenants United, and I live at the cross-section of Pacific and South 30th Avenue. I'd like to briefly echo the words of others on this matter. The way that city council appropriates and allocates tax funds represents the ethical standards of elected representatives and of the community at large. Considering Mr. Palladino's regular exploitation of working people in Omaha and his flagrant disregard for public health and well-being, it hardly seems appropriate that he should receive a tax break while working folks in the neighborhood will pay the tax increases of whatever this development, whatever this development causes. And it merits mentioning that, again, he owns many of these properties, so that would be his tenants, and their rent would go up, which would be income, which, again, flows back into his revenue. I appreciate the concern for affordable housing that some have mentioned, but placing this responsibility in the hands of private profit-driven developers is neither realistic, sustainable, nor ethically sound. As others, as one of the members of council have mentioned here today, and as you know, Mr. Uh, Mr. President Gray, Mr. Palladino is also demolishing a beloved small business in historic Florence in order to build more Dino's storage units. These are the same storage units where after illegally evicting one tenant, he took their property, put it in there, and then charged them for the expense. Your constituents, Mr. Gray, expressed a great deal of outrage and concern surrounding this development, and you committed on Facebook to push back against it. So I hope that we can, uh, count on you pushing back against this as well, and that we can count on your no vote, and that we can count on the no vote of everyone else here today. And briefly, before I wrap up here, Omaha Tenants United has collected a series of signatures of other people in Omaha. We've collected only over a few days as we realize this about coming up to Christmas, obviously a difficult time to go door-to-door collecting signatures. Um, I can read off the roll call now if you would like. Probably not.
If you could turn it over to our clerk.
Can I present it to the clerk?
Present it to the clerk, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next opponent, please.
My name is Brianna Walker. I'm at 1121 North 48th Street. Um, I'm currently writing with Palladino, and I moved in in April, moved in with a non-working stove, a non-working tub. Uh, my sinks are always overflowing. They fix, they say it's fixed, and a couple days later, they're overflowing again. Um, I have been experiencing a lot of health issues. I am on medication that stops me from breaking out in hives when I'm at home. Um, I've been having unexplained asthma flare-ups. I let them know about the issues, and they tell me that they'll fix them, and then they never do, or they fix them and it happens again. We are still experiencing mice problems. Um, I talked to one of the maintenance, and they said that, Palladino said that he will not treat everybody's apartment, just the people who complain. Um, there's still roaches. Um, the halls are never clean. It's never put salt down. I fell, have fallen numerous times because there's never salt on the ice. And he just really does not keep up with the apartments. So I thought, you know.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Hello, my name is Courtney Wismont, and I live at 4516 Spencer Street. I am a former tenant of Dave Palladino. I moved into Dave, one of Dave Palladino's units in the end of summer of the year of 2013. And, uh, shortly after moving in, all of my belongings, I noticed that the place was infested with roaches. So I didn't notice that before I had moved in. The, the roaches never ceased to exist during the five years that I lived there, especially during the summer months is when they would come out. Um, I have had numerous issues with the upkeep with the place that I was living at. The floors were very poorly put together. It looked like there were about s- maybe four to seven layers of linoleum slapped in the kitchen. There were places in the kitchen where if you stomped hard enough, your foot would go through the floor. There were, uh, there were spots on my ceiling with black mold that I had placed service requests with that had gone unanswered for over one year. I placed a service request in December of 2016, and it went unanswered. And before I moved out, I moved out in October of 2018. And about two months before moving out, I had placed a service request to finally get the ceiling fixed. And that is when Dave Palladino had sent me a text messages, a text message telling me that I would need to renew my lease in order to get that taken care of. So due to that and just the general lack of competence in the people that worked for his company, and also, um, himself, uh, I can second, uh, the gentleman behind me. There were people who came into my house unannounced. I, um, at the, I had a, a large dog, potentially dangerous dog, as he was a rottweiler. And, uh, this man could have been seriously injured by enter, entering my house without notice. I woke up in the morning to this man vacuuming dead roaches on my floor in, at, at about 8:00 AM, and this was probably maybe four months after I had moved in. Um, I brought my letter after moving out. I cleaned the, I cleaned the, the house. When I moved in, there were no appliances in there. There were no window fixtures in there. I had actually put a curtain rod up in the main living room and some curtains, and I brought my own stove in, which I did leave behind. But I did receive a letter from Dave Palladino stating that my deposit would not be refunded to me, and that also I would have to pay $700 in damages, which included a $300 cleaning fee. Um, $105 for blind replacement, when there, like I said before, there were no blinds in the property when I moved in. Uh, $500 for floor resurfacing, which of course, like I said, I told you before, my previous service request, there were holes in my kitchen floor. But how could that cost $500 just to slap another layer of linoleum? I know linoleum is pretty cheap at Home Depot. And, um, finally, uh, the appliance cleaning fee of $100, when that was the stove that I left behind. It was not his stove. And I don't believe that he should be granted this money just because of the fact that, uh, himself and the incompetencies of his company, they cannot up, they cannot keep these places clean enough for myself to live in, and I wouldn't recommend him to my worst enemy to live in. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next opponent.
My name is Jack Dunn, 1214 North 34th Street, 68131. For the following reasons, the Policy Research and Innovation Think Tank requests that you deny tax increment financing for the Ainsworth and Beverly Apartments' tax increment financing redevelopment project plan. Anecdotal evidence from multiple former renters indicates that the developer, Mr. Palladino, does a poor job of upkeep at many of his rental properties. He does, however, have good reports from properties that are regularly inspected, ones that are rented out for rapid rehousing of homeless people sponsored by local organizations who do their own inspections. Properties where there is no regular inspection seem to have little or no maintenance performed. Rewarding such behavior with city money is counterproductive. The developer, Mr. David Palladino, states that the TIF monies would be used to lower rents on the units to $625 to $675 per month. If the city council chooses to approve Mr. Palladino's request for a TIF contract, we recommend that the TIF proposal include a written guarantee that rents will not be raised beyond the rate of inflation on those units for the life of the TIF contract. We would also recommend that regular inspections be written into the agreement. Mr. Palladino does seem to keep his commitments when there is some effective accountability. To end on a different but related note, Mr. Palladino's style of property management would seem to be one of the better arguments for a rental property inspection ordinance. Complaint-based rental inspections simply do not work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next opponent.
Mr. President, Jim Posey, 19710 Marcy Circle. Not necessarily an opponent. I'm just sitting there and hearing a lot of issues that are incorrect, and they're conflating the issues. And I want to make sure that, I've used TIF dollars on development projects downtown, and you're trying, the mass is trying to associate one with the other, and they're not, they're not the same. The TIF dollar comes from the increased value that's being provided, not from the city money that's already coming in. That can't be touched. That's going to continue to come in regardless. I'm not gonna, I own, I, full disclosure, known Dave for 20 years, and I own a couple hundred rental properties myself. Your most effective way is, is to move. If you don't like it and something's wrong...
Point of order, Mr. President?
No, we don't, we're not gonna do that. We're gonna let him speak. Go ahead and speak.
I just, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna say anything because I didn't think I had anything to offer, but as I've listened to more and more people speak, I see a lot of mistakes being made and trying to associate the two items. And I just wanted to make sure I addressed the council that TIF dollars are there to encourage developers to improve and change use of something or hold rent values down. We did a couple of projects downtown that we could have never touched without TIF dollar. Those, so regardless of what they were, sorry. There's a reason for TIF, and there's a reason that TIF is used in development and redevelopment of properties that otherwise would go unused.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next opponent.
Hi, my name is Ella Laura Gamble. I stay at 4502 North 49th Street. I am still a tenant of him, which would probably jeopardize me being a tenant, but I feel like I should come up here because I'm a single mother of eight children. My oldest is 17, and my youngest is 11. I've only been in the Omaha area for four months, so I never knew nothing about this man. Never knew no bad, good, nothing. I rented from him. My first incident was he tried to evict me for almost $1,200. By the time we went to eviction court, it had went down to $239. He said I didn't pay rent. Rent was paid, everything was paid except for $50. Another thing that I have a problem with is, he told my vehicle, I had a parking sticker on my vehicle. He told it. And when I tried to get ahold of them, I couldn't get ahold of them all weekend. When I finally got ahold of them, they charged me for holding my car on their lot every day. When I got ahold of them on a Monday, they told me that I can get my vehicle back, but I had to set an appointment with the security guard that they have there that only comes at night, and only, he's so disrespectful. He's very intimidating. For me being a mother and having just my kids, I don't have to have my kids backing me up when this man comes there. You know, like, hey, you're not gonna come in here and talk to me like this. I had to pay extra money. The money that I had saved up for my kids' Christmas was taken away when my vehicle was taken. I work. I don't sit on my butt and get assistance. I work full-time to take care of my kids. I don't ask for no handout. I don't ask for no favor. I truly, truly work hard every day. That man took my kids' Christmas money. I wasn't able to sign up for no Christmas list because I knew nothing about Omaha. I still don't know nothing about Omaha. I use the GPS everywhere. So my kids had no Christmas. We had no lunch unless the agency gave us some little food to cook because I had to get my car out the tow in order to make it to work. Another thing is, I'm getting charged for a door that my kids did not break. Not my door that we go in. It's the next door, security door. We stay in our apartment building. And to an apartment building, I'm sorry, I'm shaking right now because I feel like when we, low-income and we working hard to be who we are and to take care of our children, no matter what the circumstance is, and we're not sitting there on a handout, we shouldn't have people like this that uses low-income, single parents, I don't care if it's a mother or a father, single parent. You shouldn't use no people like this. I am jeopardizing my place a home it just to come out here and talk because I really feel like this man took a lot away from me. I'm still trying to come up with the money that this man have took from me. In order for me to stay in this house, I had to agree to pay for a door that when I got off to work at 6:00 in the morning, that door was broke. My kids were asleep. I got a notice in the door that I owe $405 for a door. They cut it down to $205. I have to pay an extra $20 a month to stay in there, you know? Then they go and tell me that they didn't know I had eight children. There's no way you can hide eight children. I don't care what nobody say. You can't hide eight children. There's no way. You know what I'm saying? When I filled out the application to go put it in there, they told me that I couldn't get a house. I had to start out in an apartment because I had no rental history here, you know? Now, you know what I'm saying, they're willing to break my lease so I can find a house. I have nowhere to go. By me coming here and speaking today, I jeopardized me and my eight children being put out or me and my eight children being charged with something else. But I had to come down here and speak because there's other people out there like me. You know what I'm saying? I still am on a verge of getting my car repossessed. I have no money to pay for that. I'm still on a verge of getting put because I ain't even paid rent this month because I was, we had to go on shutdown on the 21st. We just went on the 2nd. I'm making up from my car being repossessed, eviction, you know what I'm saying? Trying to keep food, a roof over these kids' hair every day. Every day I check that mailbox to see what this man or anybody else want to charge me with. Every day I look out the window and make sure my car is still out there. You know what I'm saying? That this man held on his lot and could have just gave me my car back in one day if he just would have answered the phone, you know? I have a broken sink in there that I have to cut on and off when I cook my kids' food, you know? There's no way I'm gonna wash no dishes and no, in no, in no bathroom. That's unsanitary. There's no way I'm gonna do that. When I called them to fix it, they tell me, text me, they inboxed me, emailed me. At 8:00 at night and told me that they were gonna be there in the morning. I said, "The morning time is not good." "Well, you don't have to be there." I said, "Yes, I do." Anytime before 9:00. I have five girls, three boys. I got kids that didn't ready, going, getting dressed for school in the morning. I'm not gonna have another man in there while my kids is getting dressed for school. That's disrespectful. So no, 9:00 in the morning is not acceptable. I work third shift. Pick another time. We can settle and group. My sink still broke. I'm still trying to recover from what these people did to me. I'm still in their house. I'm still looking for a place to go. I like Omaha. My kids like Omaha. We just don't like our home.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha. Wow, this started out as TIF. However, it still is TIF, but it's also refugee resettlement. How we got everything together is hard to explain. But we're not all responsible for what's been happening. I remember two or three years ago, we went down to Metropolitan Community College to discuss refugee resettlement and sanctuary cities, which everybody denies. However, they never want to talk about, well, we never had a choice because the United Nations decided who was coming here, where they were going, didn't necessarily tell us about it. They're here. They're in our laps. So then we have these agencies locally that are charged with finding and locating housing and furniture and getting people settled for a limited time, but no plans about what happens after they're settled. So let's take, for example, what happened in some of these places like K Apartments. Who moved them in there to start with? Who signed the contracts? If they don't speak English, don't understand English, they had help from somebody where there are no problems discovered at the time. Excuse me.
Yes.
Now we have some apartment, we have some apartment buildings.
Larry, Larry, let me just stick to, stick with, stick with the TIFs.
Excuse me, we have some apartment buildings.
We want you to stick with the TIFs.
Everybody was talking about Mr. Palladino and TIF.
They're asking TIF money for apartment buildings. But what you've heard here, some of these apartment buildings are asking for TIF? I didn't get TIF to build my house. I didn't get TIF to build my shed. I'll shorten it up with this. I had problems with the inspections department myself. One problem was when I cut down a tree myself. It was ready to fall in the street on the parking. Unfortunately, I didn't check with somebody first. I'm threatened with leaning on my house for doing so. Maybe $5,000 by the city of Omaha. Couple of years back, we had a storm, and I had a roof problem.
I gotta, I gotta stop you now.
Everybody else had more than five minutes.
Mr. Store, I'm not gonna keep doing this with you. I'm not gonna keep doing this with you.
I'm sorry.
Now, either you're gonna stay on the subject, or you're gonna be removed. I'm telling you, you got, we're not talking about your issues.
You call me racist, and I am not.
We're gonna stick with the issue, or you're not.
And you call me a racist for it. You should resign.
I'm gonna ask you to, yeah, okay, go. See you later. Next opponent.
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. Didn't really want to speak on this because it's kind of heavy stuff that I don't want to voice. But I know Palladino's getting some flack. I'd like to turn it on you guys because I have heard you say that the TIF has become controversial, but the city does TIF. It's a tool by the state to incentivize development in Omaha. And you guys spoke on, yeah, that's, that's a problem. We need to be, we need, Omaha needs to provide its own incentives for developers, and there hasn't been discussion on how Omaha is going to provide a tool for developer, developers to incentivize, you know, them doing work aside from depending on the state's instrument or whatever you want to call it. So I'm still waiting on, on something that you guys put together to incentivize development. Maybe I missed it, but I haven't heard it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent.
Hello. Joey Seacrest, 6220 North 30th Street. Just very briefly, we do understand how TIF works, and we know that you know how TIF works, and we appreciate that. Our colleague, Mr. Dunn in particular, has done a great deal of research on the matter. We should reiterate that TIF is relevant here because this is a rental property. Let us please recognize that this is an important moment to define what type of behavior we approve of financially and by extension morally as a government body. This is more than just an individual issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, do the proponents wish any rebuttal time?
Well, I don't know what the best way to respond is. So I'll start with, first of all, the Yale Park. Heartland Family Services inspired every one of the units that the Yale Park tenants moved into. And they passed those. I can tell you, I'll talk to every person behind me individually about what their concern is. Some of them I've talked to before. As far as the, the issue at hand with the TIF application, that we, we think we should be granted the TIF application because it, it meet, the property meets a need, and we think that the best way to develop the property where the, we own the rest of the properties in the neighborhood. It's a long vacant building because the parking situation, not a lot of other developers have been able to make sense of it. And, and because I own a lot of the other parking lots in the neighborhood, it makes more sense for me to do that than anything else, anybody else. It also is a good use of public funds because that's what TIF is, is we're using the public's funds to, you know, encourage developers to make sense of projects that don't preview, makes sense. This building will have elevators in it, which will, you know, allow us to cater to, to the elderly and to the handicapped. That, where a lot of the older buildings down there do not have elevators, but this building will. That is not a required TIF application, but gives us a lot of flexibility who to rent to. I am very sorry that these people feel this way about me. It's very, obviously, hard to listen to. And I'm sure you'll have questions.
Thank you. With that, we close the public hearing. We have a couple of council members who want to speak. You can have a seat, Mr. Palladino, but there are a couple of members who want to speak, but, and I normally don't do this. I normally allow council members to go first. In this, in this particular instance, I have a few things I need to say. First of all, there is going to be a discussion about a landlord registry on this agenda, on a, on a, on a future agenda. And it's not going to be very long from now. I can promise you that. We have a committee that is working on it. We have a committee that is looking at it. Hopefully, that committee is going to bring forward something that is tangible and reasonable for us to look at in terms of a landlord registry. But that is going to happen, one way or another, that is going to happen. And it's going to happen very soon. Secondly, and so it, it, it bothers me a little bit because, Mr. Bajdrosik, I'm, I'm more in your corner than you think, quite frankly. But in this particular instance, to say we're not doing anything is not true. We are, we're working on, but we have to do it. We're faced with a, we're faced with a court action that took place a number of years ago that we have to try and work our way around in order to make this particular agenda item that will come up. And I promise everybody in this room that it is going to come up. But we have to do it in a methodical kind of way that makes sense and does not put us back in court if we can avoid it. But if we have to go to court, it's, we just have to go to court. But we are, we are looking at that, and you are going to see something fairly soon. Secondly, I don't disagree with those who said there ought to be some strings on, on this money if we're going to approve this. So for me, and I'm just talking for me right now, if we had to vote today, my vote would be no. I'm hoping that this council will ask for a layover so that we can discuss this a little bit more in terms of providing some sort of way to make sure that this thing doesn't continue to happen. Mr. Palladino, I have to say something to you personally. Several years ago, I asked you about some duplexes on 48th and Taylor. Okay? I got a promise from you as to what would happen. I went over there. I have to tell you that being disappointed isn't, to say that I was disappointed is an understatement. The other thing I will say to you is, after I wa, after I came back here for Yale Park, because I was out of town. I had to come back here for Yale Park. And I thought to myself, let me go look over on 48th, Sailor, Taylor, and Boyd because my guess is going to be that you're gonna have folks outside working on those buildings. The only way that you can respond to it is that you were there. You came and worked on those buildings because I watched you do it.
Duplexes.
I'm talking about the five duplexes that were supposed to, that, that we had talked about.
Right, that we had talked about.
Yes.
I put those under contract, and the seller could never provide clear title. I never bought those.
Then whoever's there is... Then whoever's there is, okay, well, let's talk about the properties that you do own, then, because the ones that you do own, you were there the very next day after Yale Park Apartments, and there were Palladino trucks up and down the street that day.
Working on my apartments that I own.
Working on your apartments, right after Yale Park.
Yes, I, I would've done that.
Yeah, you would've done that. And you, and you did that because of what these folks saying are here has some validity in my judgment.
Okay, I, I don't necessarily with that, that way, but I respect your opinion about that.
I, I, I watched it happen.
Okay, but I wanna make sure.
So it's not something that I saw, it's not something that I thought, it's not something that I dreamed up.
Yes, sir.
It's something that I saw.
Okay.
And so, I'm, I'm, the point that I'm making here, and I'm not gonna get into a debate with you about it, Mr. Palladino, I'm just telling you that what I've seen is disturbing to me. And what I think these people are saying has some validity to me. But more importantly, to me right now, is there are, in every single council member's district, slum lords that are operating. Every single council member's district, there are slum lords that are operating. And I know who most of them are. But the disproportionate number of slum lords that operate in this community operate in my district. There is going to be a registry, ladies and gentlemen, that we're going to discuss. And if I had to vote today, my vote would be no. So, with that, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. You can have a seat if you want. I do wanna thank everyone for their testimony, especially when I thank those with personal experience that they shared with us, that's a brave thing to do, Mr. Rashad and others, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but I appreciate your testimony too, and your kids that you have with you here today should be proud of what you did. I wanna say that I'm not opposed to TIF, especially when the need can be demonstrated, and that a, a property cannot be renovated without, uh, that incentive, the but-for test, especially what it means reinvestment in a historic building, and definitely what it means renovation and reinvestment in affordable housing, especially downtown. But I agree with Mr. Gray, what I heard here today was pretty upsetting, and I'm not prepared to vote on this today either. I think a lot of what we heard of today are symptoms of substandard housing throughout the city, not just about TIF, but that, that issue in particular. So I wanna expand upon that here in a minute, but I have one, one additional question I wanna ask about TIF, I think to you, Mr. Fanslaw, since the TIF committee who reviews applications for all TIF, um, propositions comes through the planning department, and there's a committee that reviews them typically comprised of planning, public works law, and I think some other internal departments, no, no city council members on that committee. My questions for you are, when the committee is considering a TIF application for apartments, or I guess for any kind of housing, does the TIF committee ever consider an applicant's record or history with other properties?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. It usually does not come up. We usually look at the project for its face value and, and vote on, again, the but-for test for each individual project.
Is that something the committee can do? Take that into consideration?
I'm gonna defer, if I can, I'm gonna defer to Paul Kratz.
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. The tax increment financing statutes are, are state statutes that allows the city to divert some of its property taxes to help finance, you know, a, a construction project, as you know. The problem with the state statutes is they're very specific as to what we have to consider, and it's spelled out specifically, so there's nothing in there that allows us to consider pass, um, landlord performance, so to speak. We can consider financial ability, but we cannot consider, again, prior actions.
And where's that authority you're citing reside? That's a state statute in our community development law, right?
State statute, the Nebraska Development Law, yes, sir.
So if one wanted to specifically have this as a consideration of TIF, that would be a state law change?
It would have to be a state law change, yes.
And that's the committee, but I don't disagree with testimony that when something comes to city council, there can be a broader consideration about what those things are and how we deem it appropriate. So I wanted to ask that question, but then I also wanna update folks before I let others talk here. On the work of our planning committee, which is myself and Mr. Harding and Mr. Pauls, who have been meeting every two weeks, ever since October, to address this issue of substandard housing in the community. We've gone about it in a very comprehensive and deliberative way. It's a complicated issue, especially with so many different units throughout the city. But also, and we know there is an issue here, and we all know there is an issue, as described here today. So the question is, how to go about best addressing that? And I'll tell you that I think we're getting close to our recommendation to the rest of the council and to the mayor, and, and ultimately to the community, about what we think those things should be, after reviewing lots of different ideas and lots of different best practices throughout the country, and, and certainly some of the input that was expressed here today. And to me, it does involve a comprehensive suggestion, it does involve education, it does involve more enforcement, and I think personally it does involve the registry myself, especially as it involves problem properties throughout the city. So, um, I wanna make sure folks know we are working on that, and that is coming soon. And I think landlords of problem properties should be on notice that changes are coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. J.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Very, I, I know that the tenants' united leadership understands how tax increment financing work, works, because we've discussed it before, but there's, there's a broader audience here today that really doesn't understand that the city is not writing its check and handing out its tax dollars, it's taking, the way the TIF financing works is it takes the base value of these structures as they exist today. In 2019, it predicts the incremental increase of what the buildings will be worth at the completion of the project, and then the landlord, in this case, the developer, Mr. Palladino's group, would pay the lender, the bank, the difference in the increment for the period of time to payback, and once the payback's over to the bank, then to the city. So presumably, in TIF, the value of the buildings won't increase if there's no redevelopment, they'll stay in their dilapidated building, or they'll be demolished, they'll be leveled, and then you won't have any value at all. So that's, as simple as I can make it today. Another thing I wanna share with, um, those that are listening, is that, um, there are developers who have had some amazing, um, turnarounds in their own histories in terms of code enforcement problems and issues, particularly in District Three, some of whom now are winners of landlord awards by neighborhoods. And, you know, I, I think of, of the Park Avenue in Leavenworth area as an area in 2009, when I got elected, that was abandoned, the historic buildings like here were owned by a group that, um, several of those buildings that had a, 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 a history of code enforcement problems. And I think about, well, if we hadn't, if we punished that developer in terms of that project based upon code enforcement histories that they had, then would we have what we have there today going on? And I don't know, I don't think so. And so, in this case, having had a few people who reached out ahead of time in the meeting say, hey, well, Mr. Palladino has this history, they're obviously not only not fans of Mr. Palladino, these are people with deep-felt, um, experiences that they've testified to today. Is, is there a, a way under this community redevelopment law that we can tie this history to this application? And I, we just heard the answer no. So then we say, well, what are our options here in terms of, of viewing this? I think you couldn't help but, um, note what Ms. Osterberry said when Gloria from OTAC came down and said, on the one hand, you have people who have very heartfelt experiences that they went through, that where there's these code enforcement issues, and then on the other hand, you have organizations like Heartland Family Service, you have, um, the city, Mr. Fanslaw saying, well, when, when there are issues brought to, to the city or, or to these organizations, he brings the properties into maintenance compliance. So, the question to Mr. Fanslaw is, you heard about the refugee resettlement from the Yale Park Apartments, have you had these complaints from, from Ms. Weibel's group?
Well, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning, I was in and out during the testimony, so I didn't hear all of it. Is your question if, have we heard of further complaints?
Right.
I can't specifically speak to that. Scott Lane, our chief housing inspector is here, he would have more up-to-date information on if we have received any of that, but I do not believe so.
Because regardless of what we do on this application, whether it's today or in, in a few weeks, because I, I hear, knowing these two, like I do, they, they wanna wait to take action on this. But what is, what is your experience with a permits inspection?
Scott Lane, City Planning. As you know, I've only been in the position for seven months. In that time, there have been, I would say, several complaints given to us, and it has to be a complaint with a name and a number, and a specific complaint, there has been several on Mr. Palladino's properties. I have recently, well, since Yale Park, got to know Hannah Weibel and Restoring Dignity and her group, as well as some of the folks from OTAC, and we are in regular contact. I actually put Mr. Palladino and Hannah in conversation with one another, where they could work together, and that has appeared to have worked. I can't speak for what has happened prior. I heard a lot of testimony that was from back in 16, 17, I can't speak to any of that. But I will tell you that Mr. Palladino has entered our office at least probably ten times since September. Had, have had discussions with him. He's very receptive, he's very responsive, has done many of work, we have cleared many of cases of his as a result of those contacts. We just brought in Hannah and a couple of other folks from Restoring Dignity just last week, and gave them training on what we look for in our code enforcement efforts. And she has taken that information and has taken it out to her other folks, so that when they do go help these refugees and these other homeowners or property renters, that they know what they're looking for, and it's not as bad.
So can you affirmatively tell this council and the people of Omaha that the refugees that have been resettled from, from Yale to the units that Heartland Family Services okayed, and then Ms. Weibel's Restoring Dignity group complained about are in fact up to code, or in the process of the department making sure they're all up to code? Because, aside from this today, we wanna make sure the people are living in decent housing conditions.
The first question is, we haven't gotten all of the complaints. Some of the things that were discussed have not been brought to our attention. That being said, the ones that have, and the ones that will, in the future, 100%, we will be certain that Mr. Palladino keeps things up to code.
All right. So I don't know if you brought any cards with you, but I'm sure.
Yes.
Hearing what I just heard from behind you, there's some people who wanna make sure they have your information. So thank you for that. Mr. Palladino, if you could come up. There's this contradiction between what we're hearing from, from you, from Ms. Osterberry, with Ms. Weibel, and with your former tenants.
Yeah, there's definitely something broken, you know, no doubt about it. I don't know if we should go case by case, as to each one of them. There is definitely truth with Mr. Rashad, the stove, he's exactly right, I bought a stove on Amazon, and it came from out of town, and it was hard to get here. And I don't know about the rest of it, but there, there is, there is truth in there, no doubt about it. And, um, one of the things I wanna bring up, I have 65 people that work for me, I didn't even think about bringing them, they're all hard-working Omahans that care about the tenants, they're gonna have a hard time listening to what I have to report to them. We wanna make a big difference. I've met with Hannah several times to talk about issues and, you know, make sure that we take care of the tenants. One thing that I wanted to bring up is that, you know, we definitely have a calling to develop workforce housing. And, um, we have a passion to serve the tenants, it's very hard for me to listen to what they say, very, very hard. But we work very closely with many agencies, and, I mean, we, we have a lot of very smart men and women there that really have a passion for their job, unfortunately, I did not bring them. But we, like I said before, we will, I'll reach out to everybody here that has been a tenant, some of the people, I don't know, they didn't rent, they have never rented from me. But Courtney, I have a pretty good idea where she lived. And Mr. Rashad, I'm almost certain that, they did, Mr. Rashad and Mark, Mr. Von Drossen, I mean, have your name spelled right incorrectly?
It's Von Drossick.
Yeah, Von Drossick, met with my attorney, and they, they came to an agreement. And I, I told Mark Von Drossick recently, I'd like to sit down and come up with the win-win scenario to meet the needs of your organization. But, you know, I, I don't know, um, the, um, but I, I, you know, I would consider myself a very reputable businessperson, I also own Dino Storage. And Pete, when I'm meeting with the neighbors up there, and we will listen very closely, sorry, Mr. Fenderston, we'll, we'll listen to the neighbors very closely. We love Omaha, I've lived in Omaha almost my entire life, and I wanna make it a great city just like everybody else, and I have a lot of great people behind me. And Scott and I work very closely together, I know all the code enforcement inspectors. In fact, Scott will be one, Mr. Lane will be one of the first people I talk to tomorrow about, you know, hey, let's make sure that, what are the complaints we should have? Maybe, I, I think maybe one of the first things to do is go with Hannah to all the different units that she pointed out, and let's go through all those. I have the capacity to do all that, unlike a lot of other landlords.
Yeah, well, today I heard anger, fear, disappointment, frustration, any number of the gambit of emotions in, in terms of the people who testified. And, and I think it would be, um, in your best interests if you, if that meeting does occur, and it's, it's not only with Mr. Lane and Ms. Weibel, but with, invite the people who are behind you who may still be in your units to reassure them that there's no retaliation concerns that they should have, because the people who are afraid of losing their place where they, they live, or, those were genuine concerns, I mean, people were shaking. So, um, that, that's, if you could sit down, that's.
Yes, sir.
The biggest, um, the biggest, I guess, hurdle in terms of where the city is today, in terms of the housing conditions, is a code enforcement system that in many regards is handcuffed by a settlement that the city entered into years ago, and the absence of a way to identify where all the rental housing stock is, its condition, and, um, many people think that a way to address that is with this rental property registry. And in speaking with Mr. Festerson, who's the, the chairman of the planning committee, and the planning committee members have been meeting on this, I, I hope that they can reach consensus in bringing this council something. We were updated today, that, at least I was, from Mr. Festerson, that we are within weeks of that proposal coming forward. And I do think that that, if it passes and creates a process to make sure that the bad actors, meaning bad being defined as those with code enforcement issues, are in the system, subject to frequent inspections, and, and whose properties will be brought up to code, is needed in the city. It, it will address a lot of the problems that, that we heard about here today, but I'm, I'm in this, this position with this applicant, being a lawyer, knowing what the law is, having the city attorney tell us, you can't, under the community redevelopment law, take this developer and say the sins of, or the violations of this code on these properties, on, on, on these things, punish him and, and hold that against him on this, because the law doesn't work that way. And, um, also from experience, knowing what's happened with other, I mean, I know of two, I'm not gonna name, but these are, these are now people who own units in my district who've had turnaround stories, because they did these redevelopments. And what was, were once problematic property owners are now the, in the good batch, so to speak, in the good reputation. And what was, were once problematic property owners are now the, in the good batch, so to speak, in the good reputation. So ultimately, if the council is not comfortable moving forward today and wants a couple more weeks to, so we can see this registration and give assurance to people that there will be such a thing, maybe that's what we ought to do. But under the law, if we're going to follow the law, the law is it complies with the redevelopment law. But for the TIF, this redevelopment project, for two abandoned historical buildings, that won't happen. And I would note, anecdotally, I think this is the first historical building proposal to redevelop it that we've had opposition to in terms of more than one or two persons coming down. Credit Mr. Store, he's against all TIF, and, and he frequently testifies to that. But I think what is an emerging area of the city, it's 22nd to 24th and Jones area, in need of redevelopment, with someone who wants to take two historic buildings and fix them up, and by the way, produce rents that'll be about $150 to $200 a unit lower than what you see in some other market rate proposals we see coming before this council. So is it affordable housing? No. But is it workforce housing? Probably qualifies. That's the quandary I'm in. And, and I don't think that everything we heard today, I don't want you to think it's falling on deaf ears because no one should live in those conditions. No one should have to go with what, what you, sir, did in falling down your stairs four times because the handle breaks loose. I mean, that's, that isn't right. And, you know, when you're, you're even living in an apartment and you're by yourself alone, you should have noticed that someone's going to come inspect your, your apartment. And if you've got cockroaches, those should be cleaned out. And I agree with you. And so I'm going to wait and hear. There's a lot more people who want to speak, but that's the situation I find myself in on this application.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
Oh, thank you. And, and yeah, I find, I'm not going to repeat what Councilman Jerem just said in, in talking about TIF. We've got two different issues going on here. We've got tax increment financing, where we're looking at the redevelopment law. And it's not that we're pathetic that we're just looking at the redevelopment law. It's because that's what we're required to do. And so our vote on this is, is we have to evaluate this project and say, does this qualify for tax increment financing? Now, we have another issue, which is the, the code violations and how we're going to get those code violations reported. And I think Restoring Dignity, Hannah, I think what you're doing is absolutely fabulous. I want to thank you for your help. But, and I want to be correct, at least right now, while, while the city is still working on what we're going to do with code violations and how maybe we're going to change what we're doing right now, be it a registry or whatever other proposal it may be, the complaint doesn't have to come from the person living in the apartment, correct? Can't the complaint, can't Hannah make a complaint on any place she goes into? Paul, or Dave? I, I just want to be clear, or Scott?
They have, they have to put their, Dave Fansler, City Planning, has to be a matter of record.
Well, I know, but if, if Hannah Wyboll is, can put down her name, and does that still work for a complaint?
Yes.
I mean, and anybody from Heartland, and anybody from any of the churches or anybody else, right? Mr. Von Drossick could report, correct? I don't know where it's coming from. Okay. Well, and, and I just, I want to make that clear because if you see a neighbor, or, and maybe people don't know that, even people that are maybe working for Hannah's organization or other organizations, I know we have some members of OTAC here. But if you see these conditions, and you're willing to give your name, which I'm fairly certain Gloria would have no problem giving her name, I know. If you, please call, please call and give your name and get a city inspector out there so that we can get people to inspect. We can do that right now. And so I just, I want to be clear on that. What I think is unfortunate is for, you know, we're talking about how we're a little limited by the statute, the TIF increment financing statute. We would like to do something and tack it on, but we're not able to do that by statute. And we are required to file, follow the law. We actually took an oath when we became elected officials. We swore to follow the law, and that is the current law. If you don't like the law, or we don't like the law, we have to go change the law. But we can't break the law of sitting as a board. And it also is not helpful to taxpayers, and all of the, all of you out there are taxpayers, and you're paying rent, and you're paying taxes every time you go to Target, and you're buying your kids clothes and everything else. Well, we don't want those tax dollars to be used for court fights, okay? We don't want it wasted on attorney fees. We want to be able to resurface roads. We want to be able to provide better-paying jobs and to be able to get incentives so that we have better-paying jobs and that we have better affordable housing in the city of Omaha. So those are things that we all have to think about when we say, well, just go fight them, just take it to court. Well, we're using your money to do that. We also have the landlord-tenant statutes. I know there's a lawyer here in, in the audience that can attest to, if you're a tenant and you sue your landlord, you can get attorney fees. There's not a lot of cases where you can get attorney fees under our Nebraska statutes. But you, if you are a tenant and you feel you've been wronged, if you don't get your, a statement of everything back at the, at the end of your lease term, or you feel that you've been overcharged or anything else, please go seek out some help from legal aid, even the self-help desk in Douglas County. They have hours for lawyers. But try and find somebody that maybe can help you with that case. Don't let landlords scare you into thinking that you can't do anything or make you feel like you are lower than they are because you're not. And by the way, I've been there. I've rented as a single mom. I only had two kids. And that was tough enough with two kids. And, and I've rented, and I know how difficult it is, and I've had an issue with a landlord. Fortunately, I ended up, I was able to go fight it, and I worked for the legal clinic for Kate, for Kate Mahern later on and found out all of the things that we could do. And I have to tell you, it was probably the most rewarding experience I ever had was working at the Creighton Legal Clinic. So if you have those issues, there are resources and there are people that you can call, so please don't ever feel like you're alone and you can be taken advantage of. We're not, we don't call on people in here. So I just want to let you know, anybody with their hand up. But I, I just want to let you know right now, we're going to have to talk about whether they're going to approve TIF increments financing, which is going to be a redevelopment of two historic buildings, which we want to do in Omaha. Whether or not we can put any conditions on that, it doesn't sound like we can. I'm more than willing to lay it over, though, because this, this question's never come up before. We just posed it to Paul, but I'd like to look at, read it. And if there are changes to maybe the statute, I'd like to talk about those before we vote on this, on this particular issue. Just to explore if we do have a TIF project and we do have a developer that maybe we want to put some strings on, can we? And if we can't, can we go about getting a senator to maybe make some amendments to that? So, you know, I support the redevelopment, and I actually support the use of tax increment financing because it, we actually get more taxes back in the end. Once the, once those buildings are, I think it's a $3.2 million project. So we're going to end up getting a lot more taxes back in the long run. So I support that, but I want to let everyone know that the vote that we have on this agenda item is really separate from what we're hearing today. And those are issues that we do need to, to address, and, and I look forward to reviewing some of the proposals in the upcoming weeks. But again, we don't need to wait for that. I want the people out there, if you see somebody that has code violations where they're living, please call the city. Please give, please be willing to give your name and address and, and make that call. So, then I have nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I will repeat some of the things that have been said. I won't apologize for saying them all. But let me start with this. So I want to be sure I, I heard Mr. Kratz, he said that we, we can't hold the past actions of someone related or not to the project. Can we include, that's correct.
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, yes, that is correct.
So, and, and part of the reason, I would think, is because it could be a different LLC making an application. It's, it's really the LLC that's making the application, not the individual that's making the application. There may be different partners from one LLC to another LLC that's making an application.
Yeah, and that happens all the time. And also, like I said earlier, there are specific requirements within the state statute. And it doesn't give us, I guess, the ability to deviate from those requirements. So that's what we look in. That's all we look at.
It says what requirements have to be met, what thresholds have to be met in order to qualify for, for TIF.
That's correct.
Is there, is, but then, is there an ability, and maybe that's some of the things that we, if this does get laid over, that we have to find out the, the answer to. Is there an ability to add additional requirements on to a TIF in order to have approval for a TIF?
I don't believe so. We haven't done so in the past.
Okay.
And I can certainly look at the statutes again, but I don't think so.
Okay. So, you know, the other thing is that, just, just the, I guess, the publicity or, or by this public consideration of, of TIF, I, I think there's going to be a lot of eyes looking at this project for two reasons. One, I think it's, as, as has been stated previously, it's, it's in an area of town that needs redevelopment, that, that this application certainly meets the requirements of, of satisfying the requirements to receive TIF. But it also, because of the exposure to it, I think there are going to be a lot of eyes looking on this project going forward with Mr. Palladino and his, and his partners. So I, I think it's, it's, we've got a number of different issues that have kind of been brought to the table. But as Ms. Melton said, I think the issue that's in front of us is, is actually the TIF application itself.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hannah, I'm going to go by people's first names, trying to get this a little bit more informal. Hannah, have you worked, you apparently have worked with Dave in the past. Would you please come forth?
Yes, I have.
Doable?
Do I what?
Is it doable, working with Dave?
Since Yale Park, yes. Before Yale Park, no.
Right, but the past is the past. Right now, Dave, would you come? So I'm assuming the two of you have worked together, and it's, you're on the move. Scott, could I have you come down here? Scott, do you have a working relationship with these two individuals?
I do.
You see, I'm, I'm here now with three of you. I hear I do, I'm willing to work. To me, this could be the tipping point of how we are going to try to change some of the, what we think is bad actors out there. We're going to have all three of you work together. That's my intent. I know TIF is over here, but if we're going to move beyond some of the other things, because I've heard, unless I'm being played, and I don't think I am. If I'm not being played by any of the three of you up there, this could be the beginning of something that just flips us around. This could, as I said earlier, it could be the tipping point, and that's what I'm counting on. Because I could not, it would've been tough for me, Dave, to hear all the things that were being said today. It would've been tough. I mean, really, I'm also, you know, a politician. That was a humor, a little joke there. But, and I think I, I really picked up some sincerity, and if I read your signs as I drive by your buildings, there's got to be a good heart inside that body. So that's what I'm saying is, let's see if we can't make it, forget about some of the things that happened in the past, and let's move forward.
I, I've called Hannah out of the blue to ask her, hey, is there anything that I should be looking to do, which I, which I want to do, and I do with other, other agencies, not just Hannah?
Right, she represents one, one agency. But I think, that, that's the point I'm trying to get across, because we're doing, we're doing a lot of talking up here. And I just think one of the major issues, we have two of them, TIF, which is going to go, we may postpone it, but legally, we have to go through on that. But I, again, I think, putting a lot of pressure on the three of you, but to represent what the future could be and maybe some of these things that we've been discussing about and planning, it may lighten our load a little bit, too, if we can find out something here. I thank you for coming up and letting me talk with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson has, has some comments to make in a, in a couple of minutes, but I asked him if he would let me speak first. I'm, I'm not asking for a layover. I'm going to choose my words a little carefully here. I'm not asking for a layover because I'm angry, even though I am, because North Omaha gets dumped on quite often, and I'm getting tired of it, quite frankly, with people who get away with things that they don't get away with in huge numbers in other districts, quite frankly. The reason why I want the layover is for several reasons. One, the, the law that Mr. Kratz talked about, I want to revisit that law. And I want to revisit what it says to make sure that there are, there is no other way to address what some of us want to get at. Secondly, I want to have a conversation with some of our Omaha senators. Because when you write a law, there, with, what, what is contained within that law, even though it's not expressly applied in the, in the book itself, is the legislative intent behind the law. And what I want to know is what the legislative intent was behind the law. And if there is an opportunity, even in this session, to make tweaks to that law. So that's what I'm after when I'm talking about a layover. I'm not talking about a layover because I'm upset, even though I am, because I see what happens across this city and specifically in my district, what bothers me about it. Secondly, Dave and I have to have a conversation because maybe we got on the wrong page, or maybe we misunderstood or something like that. But what I saw occur after Yale Park is bothersome to me, and we need to have a discussion about that. But more importantly, I think what we have to do is make sure that, what I want to make sure happens in the next however many weeks we lay this over, if that's the council's desire, is to look at the legislative intent, to see if there are, if, to, to really look at that law, Mr. Kratz. And if there are tweaks that need to be made, if there are Omaha senators that are willing to introduce some legislation that would tweak that law if necessary. So those are the reasons for the layover, in my judgment, what I'm trying to do. And I'm hoping that we can get that done in a, in a very short period of time. But those are, those are the things that I'm interested in looking at in terms of moving forward. I'm not trying to kill anybody, nor am I trying to kill Mr. Palladino's enterprise. What I am trying for is fairness. And what I am trying for is to make sure that the law applies equally across the board to everybody, landlords and tenants. So those are the things that I'm going to be looking at. Yes, I'm upset. Anybody who would represent my district and really go around and see the things that I see couldn't help but be upset. But there has to be a solution in it that is not emotional in nature, but really gets at what I think the majority of us in this room and outside of this room want to get at. So I want to make it clear what my intents are for asking for a layover. I understand TIF law. I understand that these two historic buildings ought to be done. But the oblique, but, but where we, how we get there is a subject that I think needs to be discussed between now and the time that we get back together. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll make a motion here in a second, but I wanted to allow Mr. Von Drossick one last comment. I know he was, had something he wanted to add quite some time ago.
Thank you. I wanted to address the comment Counselor Melton said, just real quick, about the nature of pathetic decisions. I don't think any of you are pathetic. I think the law is pathetic. It's clear that we have a system of government which at times respects the interests of order and the maintenance of law when sometimes that law conflicts with and actively harms the interests of human rights. If you voted to break the law today, this guy would not fall. No one would die. Can I ask you on, you know, we have a system that's supposed to be fair as far as how punishments for crimes go. If Counselor Jerem murdered Counselor Prolamro here today during the session, he would probably go to jail for a long time. What will happen if you vote no today on this TIF application? What's going to happen? Is the sky going to fall if you vote no today? Break the law. It was illegal to help transport Jews out of Nazi Germany. It was illegal for black people to sit in the front of the bus in this country for a long time. Break the law. Tell the legislature, you want something done now. Don't just go have a talk with the legislature. Break the law. Vote no. Tell them you want the. Tell them you want the authority to make decisions on these things based on who the people running these businesses are, so that you can instigate the kinds of consequences that some of us think are already happening here today. And I would argue they are not. If we approve this TIF funding, Mr. Palladino is going to continue to act as he always has. And he will continue to do that for a long time. If you can, if you approve this TIF funding, I agree, let's restore the historic buildings. I've argued before for the restoration of historic buildings. Where is the consequence? It's nowhere. Where is the consequence for people like Mr. Palladino? Give him the consequence, and he will change his behavior. But give him the consequence. Have the courage to not stand behind the law and do nothing. Break the law. Break a law. Thank you.
Thanks. We do not meet on the 22nd, so I, I would make a motion to, um, lay this over until January 29th.
Second. Uh, there's no further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
That's for the vote, not public.
Layover for three weeks. We don't have a meeting on the 22nd, so we're laying it over three weeks.
The vote?
For the vote, yes.
The public hearing is closed.
Public hearing is closed.
Hardy.
No.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item twenty, a resolution to approve the Little Italy Apartments on Pierce Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at nine two five Pierce Street in an amount up to $2,300,000.
Public hearing agenda item number twenty is today. Proponents, please. And I would ask you all, because we're still having council meeting, if you could keep it down, if you would, please. Thank you all.
Uh, yes, good afternoon. Uh, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. If I could, just real briefly, um, you know, um, on these TIF projects, as an economic development professional, I am very comfortable in evaluating the financial structure of some of these projects, real estate developments. As a land use professional, I am comfortable in looking at the physical nature of a development. But I am not comfortable in evaluating the character of a developer. And that's something we do need to be careful of as staff, so. You know, the project met the TIF criteria and all three of the ones I'm gonna present now do.
I, I don't think you need to apologize or anything like that, but thank you for your comments.
Well, it's not exactly an apology, I just wanna make it clear what, what we're using to evaluate projects. And the next one here is the Little Italy Apartments on Pierce. Um, this project will result in a large, five-story apartment building on a collection of parcels that have been assembled at the southeast corner of Tenth and Pierce Streets. This picture gives you a little bit better view. There's a KTV Burlington Station up there. This is the project site at Tenth and Pierce.
I think they want you to put up the elevation. They, they know where you are.
Okay. Uh, I can do that next here. Let's get the site plan done. That's the, uh, design of the building looking to the south, southeast. All right. Um, these will be market rate rental apartments, a mix of studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. Be a total of eighty-three units in the building at project completion. The lower level is structured parking. It has fifty-nine indoor stalls. There will also be another twenty-two surface parking stalls on the site. And an additional sixteen spaces in the public right-of-way will be improved by the developer. The developer is the Avante Group LLC, manager Eric Weisler. Um, this building design that you're looking at has gone through a couple of iterations. The developer worked very closely with the city planning department's urban design staff and also with the neighborhood. Um, he's reached out to the neighbors adjacent to this property and to the neighborhood associations and has engaged them throughout the planning process. Um, total project cost is fifteen point four million dollars. This is a fairly large project. The TIF support they are requesting is $2,300,000. And again, this project meets the criteria of the city's TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area, and it complies with the city's master plan goals. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. Eric Weisler. I'm the developer for the project at ninety-two seventeen Davenport Street, uh, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue. Been driving around Omaha here lately, noticing a lot of five-level, multi-complex-type apartment units going up. Particularly around Dundee area, the skyline of Omaha is disappearing. We have them going up above Saddle Creek Road now. I was down at the museum, Durham Museum yesterday, uh, or Sunday, I'm sorry. Looking over that nice view down in the valley, that's, now we're having rooftop garden apartments down there instead of green space and ducks flying and the water. And I suppose it'll be even worse after we destroy the ConAgra buildings. So I'm against rooftop gardens and entertainment districts. And I wanna go back a little bit here without being interrupted. There were some things brought up by different people, such as, uh, there's not enough businesses to support a lot of these entertainment districts and multi-youth apartments. Then why are we gonna build more?
Uh, Mr. Store.
Somebody mentioned the bank. Well, what bank are we talking about?
Mr. Store.
The TIF.
Mr. Store, we're talking about.
TIF, TIF.
We're talking about item twenty here. Are you?
Is it the Omaha Land Bank, by the way, I wonder?
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Dewan Hayes, twenty-six eighteen Parker Street. This isn't necessarily directed entirely at this project, more at the design. Um, my question is, what, what is Omaha gonna look like in ten to fifteen years? If we continue to approve several tan boxes with big windows that are market rate, at what cost? Um, I think, um, we should often consider the aesthetic, the use of, the creative use of materials and design when moving forward, if we're going to give tax increment financing to these projects, that they consider sustainability, sustainability practices and have sustainability plan, how they plan to use energy efficiently. Because in twenty years, this is gonna be my problem, our children's problem, thinking about inefficient buildings that we gave tax increment financing to. So with any projects moving forward, please creativity and demand it. Um, that's something I'm working with Urban Design Review Board on to make sure that, that is a recommendation to the developers when moving forward. So as the council that approves giving taxing or financing to projects such as these, stressing creativity and sustainability for the future of our city and affordability. And we're always working towards that. And with what that looks like, we're always talking about what those incentives will be. But I stress those points. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jaram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank the developer for the time and effort he, um, and his team went through to, uh, reach out to the neighborhood, to work with the planning department, actually to exceed what the urban design code calls for in this case, believe it or not, with the articulations in the design. It's not just one big wall of big windows. You maybe couldn't see it well in the, in the picture that's on the screen, but it's, there are offsetting walls that come in and out. And, um, so this particular developer, for the number of units that you heard, eighty-two, was it? Eighty-three, for the cost of fifteen million, is actually spending a lot more money than what you, I've seen recently on some, um, of these multifamily developments, including the one in, in the Duke, which is what I think is the highest per square foot price to come on the market in Omaha, uh, near the Med Center. So this is compliant and exceeds what the code requires. It won't happen without this, and, uh, your team has taken a risk. And I wanna thank you for your investment in this vacant, yeah, area of the city. Motion approved.
Moving second to approve item, item twenty. There are no further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yeah.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-one, a resolution to approve the Ames Innovation Center Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at four six zero six North at Fifty-Sixth Street in an amount up to $486,146.
Public hearing agenda item number twenty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Uh, yes, uh, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. Um, like, uh, some of our other TIF projects, this one is in an area that has not seen a great deal of economic development, so we are pleased with the location of this particular TIF project. Uh, the Ames Innovation Center is being undertaken by the White Lotus Group. Um, this might get you in the vicinity a little bit better. Um, Walmart's here, this is Ames, this is the existing Ames Plaza, a, um, a TIF project also done by the White Lotus Group. And this building here is one that's, uh, subject of this application. Um, I said White Lotus Group did the adjoining property at Ames Plaza, if you're familiar with it. Planet Fitness is in there, Heartland Workforce Solutions is in there. And the White Lotus Group also did some, uh, row homes along Fowler, adjacent to the, uh, to the property. So they've invested quite a bit in this area. Uh, this building is a large, long vacant, um, building, about forty-four thousand square feet. It's a former bowling alley and, uh, more recently was home to the congregation of the Freedom Christian Center. The building is in very poor condition. Um, there's a number of code violations. There's work being actively undertaken today, um, by the developer to do urgent repairs and stabilize the building and address some of those code issues. Uh, this building is proposed to be rehabilitated to serve as a kind of high-tech shared space for new small business starts and for other entities that are looking to locate in Omaha or expand and have an Omaha presence. You see their vision, uh, takes a pretty homely building and dresses it up quite nicely. Um, it's intended to be a green building with smart connectivity, with tenants sharing the overhead. Uh, the state of Nebraska will be leasing a portion of the building. Uh, total project investment here is approximately five million, six hundred eighty thousand dollars. Uh, their request for TIF is $486,146, um, TIF support. Project meets the required criteria of the city's TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the location, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. Ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Mr. President, members of the council, happy new year. Uh, my name is Jay Klein, twenty thirty-six North Forty-Eighth Avenue, and I represent White Lotus Group. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this is the sad thing about today. A little bit ago, we were sort of getting on a developer, probably running him up and down the flagpole. This developer, I don't see people standing up and clapping, because White Lotus is a tremendous group for the city of Omaha, and they, that's group should be getting all the notoriety that's gonna come out of today's meeting, I'm assuming by the newspapers or the TVs. They're gonna be talking about something that just happened. And this is actually something that we ought to really be talking about, because it, it has so much merit. And, uh, so I do, uh, commend the, the White Lotus Group.
Uh, let, let me add too, Mr. Pauls, that one of the, there's a state office building, one of, that, one of those places is going to be a badly needed, um, um, driver's license renewal place.
Right, doesn't it?
So that's, that's one of the things that's going to be in the building. There are also, uh, different, uh, efforts with Heartland Workforce Solutions to develop a training program in that building as well, and they're working with Metro Community College on it. And then it's going to be, the rest of it is going to be an opportunity for startup businesses to work in that facility. And it's, it's, uh, and White Lotus is doing another project on Sixtieth and Sorensen. They're one of the major developers. They're one of the major developers in North Omaha. Arun Agawal.
Yeah, I wanted you to say, because I know I've missed out the name.
But it's a good, it's a good project, and, and, uh, you know, one that I think is going to benefit that neighborhood even more. Uh, there are no more lights, is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-two, a resolution to approve the Elliott Equipment Company Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at three five one four South Twenty-Fifth Street in an amount up to $1,131,408.
Public hearing agenda item number twenty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, and one more, if I may, please. Uh, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. Um, the, uh, tax increment finance project plan for the Elliott Equipment Company proposes the renovation of existing industrial buildings at a site where, um, I'm sure you recognize that intersection, I-80, four-80, and the Kennedy Freeway is all joined together. Um, this will allow Elliott Equipment to consolidate their operations onto a single site and expand their operations. Uh, they presently operate out of, uh, five different buildings on three centrally-located Omaha properties, but this will let them bring everything all together. Uh, they presently employ a hundred seventy people. They are looking to expand by forty to fifty additional employees, uh, with this project. Uh, again, it's kind of looking to the north there, towards downtown. Uh, the building will be reconfigured for their factory work and renovated for their headquarters, offices. Uh, it'll include a break room for their employees. Um, Elliott Equipment Company, the business is the applicant in this case, and they're represented by Jamie Hudson. Total project cost is approximately thirteen point seven million dollars. Uh, the TIF support being requested is $1,131,408. Um, it's a project that, uh, will bring some more employment to the area, uh, meets the goals of the city's, uh, master plan, complies with the required criteria of the city's TIF program, and it's appropriate land use for that location. Uh, that factory had been empty for about a year, I think, roughly. And we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brent Beller, one one four four zero, West Center Road. Uh, with me today is Jim Glazer, uh, part of the applicant, or Jim is actually the president of Elliott Equipment Company. Um, and Councilmember Pauls, you kind of stole my thunder a little bit with, with some of the negativity about TIF. I, I think this particular project highlights the benefits of it, where you have a homegrown Omaha company here since nineteen forty-eight, uh, they're utilizing TIF funds. And we actually, if Jim looks a little beat up, we just closed the new market tax credit portion of our transaction, which if you've ever been part of one of those, it's, it's some severe brain damage. Um, but here's where, you know, we lost a hundred fifty-five jobs. Coming into this deal, Jim and his team are bringing a hundred and seventy with forty to fifty more new jobs. You know, a minimum salary of, of sixteen bucks an hour for the starting wages. So this is what TIF is for. It's, it's to increase or get rid of lighted and substandard conditions, but it's also economic development. That's one of the highlights of TIF. So, uh, Jim, I, we're here for any questions, and Jim, I don't know if you wanna say anything yourself, but.
Thank you.
No, I'm, if you have any questions, uh, we're here and, uh.
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jim Glazer. I'm with the Elliott Equipment Company, forty-four twenty-seven South Seventy-Sixth Circle, Omaha.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls. Oh, you aren't, okay. Mr. Palermo.
Enough of my thunder today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, you're, you're exactly right, everything you just heard. We're gonna hear about, uh, the first TIF applicant, uh, today, but in all honesty, and you heard it, this is exactly what TIF is for, uh, especially for me being a little competitive. Uh, you drive around with your colleagues and they have very smooth streets in their districts, or, uh, a, a lot of, uh, development and, uh, going on in the urban core. So for me, uh, the business that was here, uh, you, you hear that it's closing and moving, and you're like, oh, boy. You know, how, how are we gonna get somebody to District Four to make this happen? And, uh, lo and behold, here we have an amazing company with a lot of employees, with a lot of employees to, to add. And not to mention, these aren't just, hey, we're creating these jobs. These are good, uh, skilled, uh, well-paying jobs, which is, uh, very much needed. So again, this is what TIF is for. This is, uh, the projects we love to see, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move to approve. Second.
Moving second to approve item twenty-two. There are no further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yeah.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item- Item twenty-two is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-three, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Corner Tap located at nine four zero North Two Hundred and Fourth Avenue, Suite two-ten, A's Communication from the Chief Building Inspector regarding permits for the outdoor area.
Public hearing on agenda, item number twenty-three is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, still, Mr. President, councilmembers. My name's Don Hodge, four nine eight zero South Hundred Seventy-sixth Avenue. I will be acting as manager at Corner Tap, and I'm also fifty percent owner in the business. My business partner, Wayne Knight, is here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Ms. Melton.
Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Just wanted to say thank you for sitting around for two and a half hours for the liquor license.
It was very interesting, and we do not need TIF dollars.
I think you've had a lot of practice, I was sitting in gymnastics meets, I've heard, so that's, that guy, maybe this was a little more exciting, depends. No, not so much.
Not so much.
Anyway, thanks, I just want to, I just wanted to note that we've got, we've got a couple gymnasts that my niece is with his daughter. But tell me a little bit about the Corner Tap, I know this is new, what are, what are you planning on?
We are, it's approximately twenty taps, local and craft-focused beer. We're going to create a little bit more of a, oh, something other than a bar in a box, something that's got a little more atmosphere and a little more feel, but still fairly small. We expect to have about fifty patrons, space for about fifty patrons. The area town that we're going into, my partner and I both live out in West Omaha, and all the cool stuff doesn't have to be, you know, midtown or downtown, so we're hoping to bring a little, a little bit of fun stuff.
I'm glad you're going out west, so that I don't have to drive all the way downtown.
We're hoping to do a little, a little, a little fun stuff out west.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, there are no more lights, is there a motion? Move and second to approve item twenty-three, no further lights, roll call.
Festerson. Yes, can it be approval?
You have to, subject to permits. Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item twenty-four, an application to consider a Class C K liquor license for Club Karma located at one four one nine dash one four two one Farnum Street.
Public hearing on agenda, item number twenty-four is today, proponents please.
Hi, I'm Paul Hyde, seventy-four thirty-six Washington Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here as proponent for any questions that the council may have for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Bill Petrios, fourteen nineteen Farnum, here to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Jerem.
Yes, if I could have the applicants come up. Mr. Petrios, you too.
Yes, sir.
Are you a part of the ownership team?
No, sir.
Okay.
My family's selling.
Pardon me?
My family's selling.
Okay, thank you, then you go ahead and say it.
Yes, sir.
You were Paul, right, Mr. Hyde?
Yes, sir.
You may be the most well-intended prospective applicant that, that we've had, but we wouldn't know it by reading what you've submitted in terms of what your business plan and operation's going to be. So indulge me with the questions that I have to ask, okay?
Sure.
In the city recently, we've had some dance club applications that were involving not topless dancers, but Candy Land, there's, there's been other bottle clubs that have come in, and, and so when your application came in and just said dance club, there were a lot of antennas raised, I got an email from a constituent worried about it, I'm hearing about it from others. So if we don't do our due diligence with you to really explain what you're doing and what you're not doing, then we would be remiss and really not know what we're voting on today. So would you please take a few minutes and tell us what you're up to?
Sure, we're definitely not having that type of dance club. We're, we're gonna, we're actually doing a, it's going to be a normal, just a normal straight venue, local venue. My son is a local music guy. We don't have any plans for anything large, we're just three hundred venue, seat venue, you know, we're going to just bring in local acts. We don't, you know, we're not looking to do anything huge.
Okay, so it's, it's your traditional...
We, we do...
Entertainment venue with traditional music.
Right. We're going to have a top forty night, my son is electronic dance music, he's, does that type of thing, but we're also going to be opening to do, we've booked anniversary parties and different things like that in the past. I've run the German American Society and done thousands of weddings and anniversaries and different things of that nature, and we've already booked a few things like that. We've also done, we did Toys for Tots in December, you know, so, you know, we're planning on doing more responsible things.
All right. And, and I do know the new ownership team for the building, Mr. Harding told me about the ownership change recently.
Yes.
And I'm sure as responsible landlords, you'll be keeping the premises well-capped, the outdoor areas managed under control and clean.
Yes, we're actually doing upgrades to that, we wanted to do upgrades to the cleaning of the area and the front of the building.
Well, I want to, you know, wish you luck on your endeavor, and you've satisfied the concerns that I've heard about that people have with your application, so.
Thank you, sir.
Move to approve.
Move to second to approve item twenty-four, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-four is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item twenty-five, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Chance Ridge Event Center located at five zero eight North Skyline Drive, A's Communication Opposition.
Public hearing on agenda, item number twenty-five is today, proponents please.
Thank you, sir. My name is Robert Peters, I'm the attorney for the applicant, my office address is one four seven four seven California Street. This is essentially a reapplication, this applicant has had a license since two thousand and five at this location. It's, it's basically a venue where, well, it's a social venue primarily, and it's a little unusual in that it's got a horse arena there, so they have equine events, and they also have an adjoining social area where they put on, where, where they lease out for weddings and that type of event. The reason that we had to reapply was because it was an illness for one of the applicants, and the reapplication got dismissed, so, or the license didn't...
Lapsed.
It lapsed, so we had to reapply, and that's why we're here.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Main, I live at twenty-one six oh five Chancellor Road, which is behind the Chance Ridge Event Center. My home is within five hundred feet of the facility, as well as, well, probably four or five other homes. I was one of the people that received the letter asking for public comments, I appreciate the opportunity to do that, so that we're aware of this. I do have some information I'm passing around, it includes four signed letters from other neighbors opposing the application, as well as a list of twenty-six affected homeowners, a list of those, as well as a map. You'll see that most of these homes are fairly close to the, the Chance Ridge Event Center, which is a, a place that the owner described, or the attorney described to you. I've also included a list of the nine-one-one calls regarding noise. I did not include nine-one-one calls regarding false fire alarms, which apparently there are quite a few of those. And also gave you some documents that describe some common noise levels, like right now, me speaking to you is about a sixty to seventy decibel sound level. A rock band with amplified music is around a hundred and twenty decibels if you're within close distance to the speaker. So by the time that hundred and twenty decibels goes from the Chance Ridge Event Center in the building or with the building with the doors open, that sound hits all of those neighbors over there, and is, in my opinion, hasn't been measured, but clearly above the statutory limit of sixty decibels before nine PM and fifty-five decibels after nine PM. I'd like to, I guess one thing I, I wanted to clarify, I was a little surprised, but it's not a problem, but until I read the agenda, I thought this was a brand-new application, that they hadn't had a liquor license before. So the letters and some of the things I'm going to talk to you about assume there wasn't a license, and what could potentially happen if there was a license? Well, I found out that they did have a license, which kind of makes sense now, because the problems we're pointing out, and that I'll point out to you, are actually happening, and I think the fact that they had a liquor license is really evidence of the reason that these problems have happened, is, as we pointed out, it's kind of like they've come true. So I would like to read a letter from a neighbor who lives directly behind the Chance Ridge Center. He sent this same letter to Councilman Harding earlier this week. His name is Tom Ramsbottom, and he lives right behind the Chance Ridge Event Center. He's opposing it for the following reasons, and he gave some really good examples, which really mirror the same examples that I have, with the exception of one. While we all want to be good neighbors to the event center, with my wife and I find ourselves having to continually clean up after they have private events at their facility, and I'm going to put this up here so you can kind of see...
It'll come on, they're operating it on the side there, you'll see.
Okay, so you'll see, here is the Chance Ridge Center, and here is the Chancellor Road neighborhood, and the person that, letter I'm reading is right here. And another gentleman was going to speak to you today, he lives right here, but he had to leave at four o'clock for a meeting, and I have some notes from him as well, if you'd like to hear those. So we've spent hours, they, this is Tom, spent hours of cleanup, spent on litter cleanup due to wind, lack of supervision, or lack of staff workers, he's speculating on these, during and after their events. We continually have to patrol our back tree row with trash bags to clean up paper plates, napkins, pop or Gatorade bottles, and even glass beer bottles that have been deposited in our tree row. Another concern is loud music, and this is frankly the number one concern I heard from the neighbors, is the loud music. The loud music goes deep into the evening, our neighborhood is very calm and quiet, you can imagine, most of these are two-acre lots, most of these, it's very calm and quiet, you can imagine that when loud, and I do mean loud in all caps, music is played until one AM or later, it becomes concerning. While I'm not trying to be, stay off my lawn guy, my wife and I chose our property several years ago because we love the quietness of the neighborhood in Elkhorn. Example, there are no streetlights on our street, and our neighborhood is, feels very country. In defense of the event center, most of the parties that occur in the summer, I agree with that, and hence they all leave the large barn doors open and large garage doors open to allow summer breeze to filter through their events, this leads to a much larger opportunity for noise to filter out of the building into our neighborhood. The third concern he has, and other neighbors have had this concern, I have not experienced this, is trespassing. Several parties at the event center routinely involve family events, that's a good thing. I say that because there are many, many children there, and I don't know how that pertains to a liquor license, maybe it has no, no effect on that. But we oftentimes have to remind the young visitors to stay on their side of the fence and not wander over into our backyard. Once we had to ask kids to stay off our trampoline and out of our putting green, I didn't know he had a putting green, so I'll have to take advantage of that now. The largest concern I have actually really doesn't have anything to do with a liquor license, it's the fire alarms that tend to go off during some events. The fire alarms go off, then they seem to go off again and again, that same night. Not sure why it's happening, but it does. He speculated maybe the, the DJ has the, the smoke machines, we have no idea. It doesn't really matter why, but there are a lot of false alarms, and you can call the nine-one-one and get those records if you'd like. So obviously, he's in opposition of, of the liquor license. So another, believe it or not, this neighbor submitted a letter as well, she has a, that's at Cumberland and Skyline, it's quite a ways away. She actually hears the music at night, or even during the day as well, and I was just shocked that the, that it would go that far, so imagine what Mr. Ramsbottom and Mr. Curly and myself here, when we're trying to go to sleep at ten o'clock at night. The gentleman that left is at this residence here, which is right next to me, fairly close. He's, he and I both have called the police a number of times to report the noise and the, the noise. He's called Chance Ridge, he's actually gone over to Chance Ridge when they were playing loud music, and told them that it was very loud and very disturbing. I don't know what the outcome of that was. They also turned in a police report about a rifle gunshot during the daytime. I don't know the outcome of that, but that is of public record, if you wanted to look at that. He's said, you know, he has kids, when there's bands there quite frequently, they can't sleep at night, and it actually rattles your windows, it's that loud. I have earplugs that, next to my bed in my, next to my bed, and sometimes instead of calling the police, I'll just put the earplugs in and roll over and try to take another melatonin to, to help me go to sleep. He said he put headphones on, but he can't sleep with headphones. It's not just the music, but it's the yelling and screaming, because sometimes these parties seem to drift outside of the building. So in summary, I think you get my point, very, very concerned that these problems now will come back and be continued, and if I have a liquor license, I think I can be open and serve liquor till two AM in the morning, and does that make them believe that they can continue to play loud music until two AM, which they have in the past? So I would propose that we not renew this application or give them this application, we strongly oppose it, and mainly it's based on just the poor behavior of the people that go to these events, that run this music, and the lack, and the repeated code violations of loud noise and litter, those are code violations, and an apparent lack, in my opinion, of oversight for, to prevent trespassing and to prevent litter. Where is the oversight to ensure loud music is not played, and that people do not trespass and they do not litter? So if you have any questions, that's all I have, but I appreciate your time and the opportunity to present my, my neighbors and my case.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, do the proponents wish any rebuttal time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Name and address again for the record, please.
Yeah, Robert Peterson, one four seven four seven California Street. I was aware of, of one complaint that had been submitted here to the council, this kind of comes new to me. I visited with the applicant, the last contact we had from a neighbor was in November of two thousand and seventeen, and that was Tom Ramsbottom. And since Tom came in and, and visited with the applicant, they have restructured their contract such that each event has got to have a uniformed security there, whether it be an off-duty police officer or a private security. They have created a list of qualified people that if someone's renting, renting the place, they have to hire somebody off of that list. And admittedly, there had been a problem in the past where the, the stage is on the north end of the building. The bands were parking right on the north edge and coming into the door at the stage, and they were not shutting the door, and that's what the primary problem, the noise was. What we have addressed, at least with the security people, is they have got to keep the doors to this place closed. Now, some of this stuff I'm, I was unaware of, but we have not had, we've never had the police down, or I don't think in five years, six years? I mean, it's not been an issue with the police, and for some of this stuff, I guess it comes as a little bit of a shock, but, you know, we have implemented security since Mr. Ramsbottom has been there, and the security is to help keep the doors shut and the noise in there. I mean, there's a lot of Hispanic place, or people that come in and rent that for concert, this is where we have the primary problem because of the nature of the music. But we've done what we, we can very recently to try to... But we've done what we can, very recently, to try to control that noise.
Okay, thank you. That closes the public hearing. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Main, I had, I don't know if you had a chance to talk to Tom, I think, I don't know if he was out of town, but we had a good email conversation, and I think the gist I got from it was, he wanted to make sure that a lot of these issues were at least addressed, and, hold on, I was trying to bring it up. The closing response was basically, you know, "I'd like to keep it above board, and see what we can work out," paraphrasing, but, and I talked to Mr. Peterson yesterday, and before today's meeting as well, too. I guess my first question would be, is there, do we have a time constraint on this?
It is, and answer is due back to the Liquor Control Commission by January 26.
Okay, and we...
We could lay it over one week.
We could lay it over one week. What I'd like to do is, and I had some discussions with the, again, with Mr. Peterson, about maybe limiting the hours, or have an hour for cutoff for the music, which I think would be helpful. What I guess I might ask was, if we had an operating statement filed, where it had something that said that, you know, the doors must remain shut, you know, during the hours of operation, so that the music's not spilling out into the neighborhood, or, you know, is there, if the doors are open, is that considered an outdoor venue?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. We can attach conditions on the license, we've done so in the past, and if you want to have a list of things, that's certainly appropriate. Whether or not you have the doors open, if that's, becomes a public place, I don't know, I kind of doubt it, but I don't have a good answer for you right offhand.
So I guess, not knowing exactly, I think there are a number of things that need to be addressed, Chairman, rather than try to do it on the fly, on the floor today, what I'd like to do is maybe lay it over. I can have a discussion with Mr. Main, as well as some of the other neighbors, and the attorney, and see if we can't work out some parameters to, or some requirements to go along with this recommendation to the state.
Is that a motion?
Can I comment on that?
Sure. Mr. Main, can, I'll have...
Jeff Main, again. I think that's precisely the avenue to go, so if we can't get these things remediated, and taken care of, and ensure that the city code ordinances are followed, we would not want the license renewed. Maybe that's the stick, that says, really what we want is, we don't want noise, we don't want trespassers, we don't want litter, right? We don't want gunshots in the backyard. So if we can get some assurance that those won't happen, we're very happy, then I can still go over there and have a drink sometime, because they'll have their liquor license. So we would be in favor of your approach.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll make the motion to lay it over for one week.
Second, well, Mr. Pauls.
Yeah, I have a question. I've heard that there are an awful lot of fire alarms, and police, so I'd like to somehow know how many, if we could find out how many fire alarm, because you have to pay for it, I think, don't you, if it's a false alarm?
Yes.
And also, the police reports. I can't recall seeing any come in front of our committee, but they may have. I'm just, I'd just be curious.
I can get those.
Okay, thank you.
You think it's been moved and seconded to lay over for one week? There are no further lights, roll call.
Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 26, An Application to Consider, A Class II Liquor License for Indian Bowls Located at 3901 Farnham Street, Number B.
Public hearing on agenda item number 26 is today. Proponents, please. Welcome, Cynthia.
Thank you, Chairman and council members. My name is Cynthia Epstein, 11516 Nicholas Street. I'm here today representing Joy New Sang Inc., which is opening a new restaurant called The Indian Bowl in the Blackstone District, and we would request your approval of the liquor license, and the owner is here, if you have any questions, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 26, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 26 is approved, seven to zero. Consent Agenda, Any member of the City Council May Cause Any Item Placed on the Consent Agenda to be Removed. Items removed from the Consent Agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the Consent Agenda, in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 27 through 29 were held on December 18th, 2018. Motion approved. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items numbers 30 through 57 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Oh, did you want one? Yes, ma'am.
I have a list of licenses, I didn't, I didn't get a sheet.
Manager?
Yes.
Okay. It would be under consent.
It would be under consent. It would be under consent.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
But you can go ahead.
Yeah, she wants to...
Sure, go ahead.
I have the letter that came in the mail. My name's Kim Fielder, I'm with GPM Investments, 1119 Port Street, is where a Fast Smart gas station is. Brandy Stark is the store manager, she actually had another personal hearing that she had to attend today. I'm the district manager, so if there's any questions, she actually just had, on December 29th, a sting through FDA, which she passed for the alcohol license. There's tests that all the employees and managers have to take, to make sure they're aware of how to card people with cigarettes and alcohol.
You said GPM, right?
GPM, Fast...
Item 33.
Is it? Okay, sorry.
Thank you. With that, the public hearing is closed. Your motion? Moved and seconded to approve items numbers 30 through 57, no further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Shout out to the people who have to wait in there. They're coming in for a new license, a month and a half in Elkhorn.
There won't be any TIF with that, will there?
No, it's a new building.
Item 58, An Ordinance to Continue the Ongoing Maintenance of Portions of Abbott Drive by Landahaw Nurseries to Maintain Plantings Along Portions of Abbott Drive, and to Specify the Terms and Conditions for Such Maintenance Services Between the City and Landahaw Nurseries Through 2027.
It's been moved, placed on, placed on file, yeah. Is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 59, An Ordinance Approving a Bid in Multiple Purchase Orders From Sap Brothers Inc. for Oils, Lubricants, and Fluids Project, with an annual estimated cost of $144,654.60.
Public hearing on agenda item number 59 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 60, An Ordinance Approving a Change Order to the Contract Awarded to Miller &amp; Sons Golf Cars for a Four-Year Lease of an Additional Hundred Golf Cars, in a Total Amount of $199,120.28.
Public hearing on agenda item number 60 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 61, An Ordinance Loving a Special Tax Assessment for Cutting and Clearing Weeds, Grass, and Worthless Vegetation Group, Number 2019-01.
Public hearing on agenda item number 61 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 62, An Ordinance Loving a Special Tax Assessment for Litter Removal, Group 2019-02.
Public hearing on agenda item number 62 is today. Proponents, please.
Dave Austin, Chief Field Inspector, Parks and Recreation, Public Property, to answer your questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good evening. Evening now. My name's Larry Maruz, 9005 South 13th Street, Bellevue 68147. I'm here on behalf of Diane Russo, who had a city come and talk about weed control, and I volunteered, because, to be honest with you, Diane doesn't have a whole lot of income, and she didn't have the money for people to pay to help clean up and do those things. So I was doing the cleanup, I did the weeds, I sprayed, I have a letter. Killed trees, did those kind of things, working towards it. I called Mr. Austin to let him know what we were doing, and he agreed that everything was working fine, but I needed time, because there was a lot to do. This is a very simple thing, but we had agreed that if further action was being taken by the city, that certain things wouldn't be removed from the property, certain valuable things. As an example would be, I, we talked about the, there's an antique iron fence that used to go around these properties, and there's also, there were some metal chairs, lawn chairs that had value, I asked not those to be taken if something happened. While time went by, and I kept working with Diane, and I showed her how to use the chemicals, and all those kinds of things, and slowly working, probably not to the effect, or the timeliness, that the city wanted. So they came, and cleaned up the property, and the problem I have is, they took the chairs, after we had an agreement not to take them, because there was eight of them, and they value at about $50 apiece. So all I'm, all we are asking, or I'm asking for Diane, as she's been fined by the city, to drop the fine in compensation for the agreement that we had not to take the chairs. And so the property is still being cleaned up, and still needs work, but we're working on those things slowly, because really, it's just volunteers that'll help her. She doesn't have family to help her, she only has people like me, and Rochelle. So that's, that's what I'm asking for the council, and I appreciate your patience and your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard? Or opponents, rather?
Hello, Ray Dell Meehan, 1702 South 11th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Bear with me on this. The first letter she got, that I saw, was dated 12/5/2017. It was winter, and he wanted, or Mr. Austin, excuse me, wanted things cleaned up. I called him on the phone, he was very cooperative, and said she could wait till spring. Some of the items were not litter. They were unused pots, plant containers, used patio chairs, and an unlicensed blue van. She removed all the litter, paper, cartons, boxes, et cetera, and she licensed the 2000 Dodge Caravan. On May 1st, 2018, we were supposed to meet with Mr. Austin, because here's the deal. She needs somebody with her, because we need witnesses. Do you understand what I'm saying here? We can't trust them, and so I've asked her, always have somebody with you when you talk to these people. If they call you on the phone, write down your notes of what was said. That was May 1st. He didn't come, he called, he was called, we were supposed to meet at 8:00. We waited till 10:00, he didn't come, he was called, he said he wasn't able to come, because he was meeting people, or hiring people, and he stated that he didn't have any other time to meet. Her notes of June 1st, 2018, she talked with Mr. Austin when he came and delivered this letter, which is letter number two. He told me that the front yard looked all right, the backyard, weeds, branches, sticks, were the issues. I told him I was taking care of it. This is Ms. Russo's notes, so when I say "I," it's she. I would continue to keep taking care of it, and also was working on it myself, and having other people help. I do have plenty of time this summer, she works at school, and many other places. The person, Deacon Mers, who just spoke with you, sprayed the selection, section of the weeds, you heard what he said. Dave Austin told me, he would not take anything away from my backyard, if I had all the weeds cut down. Letter number two came on June 5th, and it said weeds only, no litter, weeds only. The weeds were cut down, she had spoken to Mr. Austin about this, she called the weed and litter place, and informed them by 6:15:18, that they could come and see for themselves, and relook at the property. The person she spoke with, whose name she did not get, said they would give the information to the proper people. She didn't hear anything back, the rest of June, or during July, we all assumed that they came and inspected, and that everything was all right. June 1st, this is her notes, she had hired help that came and took care of everything in June, and so she herself was maintaining everything. On July 27th, 2018, after being told Mr. Aust, by Mr. Austin, that if the weeds were cut, all personal property would not be touched, Mr. Hauser came to the property with the tow truck, with big trucks, and took all valuable personal property. Mr. Hauser said he was subbing for Mr. Austin, who was on vacation. Either Mr. Hauser, or Mr. Austin have a lack of communication, or Mr. Hauser took advantage of the situation, and took things into his own hands. These are DMR, her notes again. I have a partial list here, of what was taken. I'm not going to go over all of it, but I am going to tell you these few things. From the front porch, three groups of items were taken. The note that I have is, three laundry baskets with clothes to be taken to the laundry, were taken. The front yard, seven groups of items were taken. The note here, three collectible black flower pots, that were not broken, or harmed in any way. Workers were asked if the cops, cops, excuse me, pots could be kept, since they were in use and not broken, they were refused, they took them. The backyard, 19 groups of items were taken. One of the things that were taken, were five metal trash cans that were in use. They're valued, because they were all metal trash cans, at $42.97 apiece. One large metal trash can, used to store two religious statues, it was taken, $47.99. The vintage lawn chairs, he's already talked about. Five galvanized buckets, $16.95, that total is $84.75. Thirty old terracotta clay pots, not broken or cracked. They are six for $14.99, $72.30. The back porch, seven items plus, all, this is the only note, all brooms, rakes, shovels, including her snow shovel, and her gardening shoes were taken. Now, these are old items. These were given to her by her parents and her grandparents. She hates to see them gone. As somebody that knows this much about vintage things, I know how important they are. The Dodge Caravan was taken. They wanted to take both of her cars, but the police officers that had been hired to be there, said, "No, you have to leave one car for her to drive." So it was licensed, it got taken to the impound lot. Ms. Russo sold the car to U. Pullitt for $400. After checking with the used car salesman, who was told the condition of the car, he figured the worth to be between $500 and $1,000. So she lost between $100 and $500 on that car. A rough estimate of just a few items that have been taken from her property, is $1,100, and that's not counting the money lost on her car. So now, here's my three questions for you. Number one, do city employees have the right, honestly and truly, do they have the right to come on a citizen's property, and take whatever they deem is unsuitable? The definition of litter is trash, such as paper, cans, and bottles. And I've got two pictures here, of another place in our neighborhood. Do I just set them on here?
Yes.
Yes.
Where it looks like litter to me, I didn't have it turned right. Okay, there it is. But these pictures were taken on August 17th. Here's another one. Trust me, her stuff wasn't that tall. Then the next question I have is, are city employees knowledgeable about vintage items? And my last question is, why is Ms. Russo under severe scrutiny by this department? And my last question is, why is Ms. Russo under severe scrutiny by this department for five years? There are other property owners in this area that have weeds, stacked bricks neatly in their yard. No one else is accountable but this woman. And that's it, guys. And yes, we do beg you to take away this fine for her.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
I'm Diane Russo, and I live at fourteen fifty-six South Eleventh Street. And a few things I want to point out is, when Mr. Hauser came down, he, the police officer that he hired treated me brutally. He threatened me, he grabbed me by my arm and left a bruise mark. And this is all done on my property. I was not allowed to defend myself or my property. And also, they did damage to my foundation when they removed some of the stuff into my porch. And that's going to cost me money to get all that fixed. And also, the pictures that Mr. Austin showed, they were photoshopped in compo, in composition and collaged. He did trick photography. He made it look worse than what it really was. And before he took those pictures, they scattered all the stuff in the yard. Because, because all that stuff was not scattered in the yard. It was all arranged neatly against my house and on the porch by the person that helped me cut the weeds down. And they, they fixed those pictures to make it look worse than it really was. And that's how it was, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Sienna, Dave, can you, do you want to come up, please, and?
Dave Austin?
You can put them up if you choose. Oh. Think you can.
Put it right here.
All of them. That one first, that's my back porch. They tore up the rug, that was on the back porch.
The rug tore up, torn up. Yeah, I was with you. I've seen the pictures and, and. Show the scattered one. That's the important one.
Well, I have the pictures that the, the damage that they did.
To the house.
When they removed my items.
You could email those if you wanted to. You can email the pictures, because we won't vote until next week.
They, they chipped, that, that's part of my porch that got, some of the paint got chipped off. Evidently, they must have hauled things over. Because they wouldn't let me go back and defend anything. And then, that's part of the chip they did. That's part of the foundation that they, that they damaged, and those are loose pieces that are broken off of the foundation. They lose some items from there. Excuse me? I was afraid it's gonna.
Maybe we could zoom in on that.
This is all foundations that they damaged. And I have to have someone come down and fix all that. It's going to cost more than four hundred and fifty dollars.
How was, how was that damaged?
Well, they moved items that were there. You know, I had a work table that was there, and when they moved those items, they must have dragged it and it, and damaged it, because it was not like that before. Those are just pieces that are all crumbled from the foundation that they destroyed. Well, it's mostly of the foundation, the back porch, which they tore up the carpet and they chipped paint off of the pillar. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Dave Austin, Chief Field Inspector, Parks and Recreation, Code Enforcement. First, I'd like to say Diane has great friends. I can't commend them enough. I know this gentleman to be Larry. I did have one conversation with him. I don't remember when it was. We talked about it. I could tell that he was a good person trying to help her out. And I remember that I told him that he needed to send me something in writing before anything was going to go on the back burner, that we wanted something in writing. I'd heard too many plans, too many people were coming to help, and I never heard from him. I checked my email a month later. I thought maybe I'd missed it. Hadn't, I hadn't gotten anything. I want to commend Ms. Meehan. She's a great friend, definitely a person you want to have in your corner. But I feel like her efforts would be better spent just helping her abate the nuisance, the problem at hand. I could go into the PowerPoint. You guys have seen it. I'll answer whatever questions you'd like, but you know I'll sit up here forever and talk about this.
Mr. Gerald.
Is the public hearing closed?
Yeah, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Austin, has, have you or anyone in your department photoshopped any of the pictures that were taken on the property?
Never, not, not to my knowledge. I, I don't think any of us have the time.
And I've heard reference to something called a complaint-driven system for code enforcement.
It is a complaint-driven system.
So what is that?
Basically, the inspectors don't go out trying to find things to do. There's just simply not enough time.
So if Ms. Meehan saw a property with tall vegetation or some litter, garbage on it, unless someone called to make a complaint on that specific property, your division is not going out looking, inspecting the city randomly? Is that what that means?
That is correct.
So it's entirely possible there are hundreds of examples of properties in the city that have violations that are not being enforced right now because no one's filed a complaint on them?
Likely, tens of thousands.
Okay. Now, with regard to Ms. Russo's property, there was a question raised, they didn't understand why the department's focus over so many years has been prolonged on this property. So the question is, notwithstanding having a good friend, Ms. Meehan, are there other neighbors who basically have called in this property, who are calling in and complaining and therefore triggering this inspection?
Yes.
So you're not out, single-handedly, on your own, or Mr. Hauser, going to this property randomly? It's as a result of persistent complaints?
Correct. And I would say that in, in the, in the last couple of years, the complaints are more detailed, they're more compelling. The complainants are spending more time writing their complaint down. I think that Mayor's hotline staff gets those complaints and we get them directly. This particular violation notice that was sent back in December was as a result of a lengthy, detailed, and compelling complaint from presumably one of her neighbors. It was anonymous, but it was a neighbor that lived fairly close. And I didn't, I didn't include that entire letter in BOE.
Right. So did you ever make any promises, representations, or under, anyone under your supervision in your department, that the city would not remove or abate the nuisance? Meaning?
We've never.
Larry, Mr. Larry, what's your last, Mers? Maruz? Thank you. Mr. Maruz interpreted something either you or someone in your department said that led him to believe if he just sprayed the weeds, then there wouldn't be any of the other abatement done.
Yeah. And I would say that's a mistake.
In fact, after that alleged conversation happened, I believe you delivered another written notice of violation, did you not?
Absolutely correct. When I had the encounter on June first with Ms. Russo, which was the first time I'd ever met her.
That's the one that, by your car that we heard about at Board of Equal?
Yes. I was simply there to leave a third, which would actually be her fourth notice, but her third posting, on the front door with a handwritten note that said, we are coming to clean this. And the only reason I did that third one was because Ms. Meehan had mentioned a day or two prior that Ms. Russo was still saying she had never gotten a notice, and that she was going to simply lock the backyard and we wouldn't get in. And I said, well, fine, I can fix that. One last notice, and I looked the thing over.
Thank you for your time. If you, you can sit down. You may stay close, there are other lights, but. Ms. Meehan, please, we'll, no, you're out of order. If I call you up. We'll get to you, but wait your turn, please. If a citizen believes the city has caused damage to your property, whether it's taken property, property wrongfully, whether it's damaged the structure of your house physically or caused you some sort of personal damage, you have a right to file a claim against the city. If you do so, within one year of when that claim arose, and you do it in writing and you file it with the city clerk. So to the extent that you believe that you've been wronged and you've been damaged by the city, you have that right to file that written claim with the clerk. And I don't know when the abatement was, Mr. Austin, but could you tell us? So before July twenty-seven of this year, you have to file in writing a claim with the city clerk, who will then give it to the city attorney to review and respond to, or you will forever lose your right to do that. Okay, I hope, as your friends are here, they can help you document your claim that we heard a little bit today on the items that you believe were wrongfully taken. In terms of the damage to your, your foundation and the other items that you're relying on Ms. Meehan or Larry, anything you can give from them to support what your claims are in terms of what your testimony was and what you believe the deal was that you had, include with it. When it comes to things like the scrapes on your house or the foundation cracking, I can say from experience, if you don't have an engineer, a structural engineer, or some, somebody to say, this is what causes this damage and it, and it's because of what they did. It, without regard to whether the city has other reasons to deny it, they won't even consider that. So if you do want to pursue a claim, you can do that, but you, you don't have much time to do it. It has to be in writing, and Ms. Butler is our city clerk, and that's who you have to have it submitted to. Okay? Now, why don't you come on up? You have to say who you are again.
I'm Diane Russo.
And what is it you wanted to say?
What Mr. Austin said about the letter.
Because you're, you're, you're who I'm interested in hearing from. You're the person who, over all these years, had neighbors, I don't think you were aware of, who were very concerned about you at, to start.
Well, no one confronted me.
They were.
Offered to help.
They're saying they're worried about you, that perhaps maybe you were a hoarder, perhaps you had other issues.
Well, they could have said something to me. They could have offered to help me. No, they, they had, they, they had to cause trouble. But what Mr. Austin said about the letter, that was the same old letter since December fifth that they kept using over and over about the, the stuff that I already complied to and removed. And he kept giving me that same old letter. And when I talked to him on June first, and he made that agreement, if the weeds were cut down, that he wouldn't touch my stuff, I got the letter on June fifth about the weeds only to be cut down, and nothing else was mentioned. So with my impression that that letter, the first letter, was omitted, and the letter about the weeds was the one that I had complied to after we had talked and he made that agreement. And then in past letters, no, nothing was ever mentioned about stuff on my back porch or the stuff that was in the backyard. That, those items were never mentioned. They were never an issue. No, it's when they snooped around my yard and they saw stuff, that's when they did this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Meehan, I told you I'd call you up. Come on up.
First of all, you have to realize, I'm not one of her great friends. I'm her neighbor. I don't want to see her hurt. And I had heard from either Mr. Hauser or Mr. Austin that the last time she was in front of this body, that she was made fun of and laughed at, and I wasn't going to see that happen again. That's number one. Number two, he's the deacon from our church. He didn't misunderstand anything. And number three, the letter that we have that now says weeds is dated Ju, uh, June the sixth, twenty eighteen. There were no weeds on that back porch. There were no weeds on that front porch. There were no weeds in that blue van. And that's what I want you to think about, because it's just, it's not right, and you know it isn't right. And I thank you because I know it's late and you people have to sit through lots of things, and I appreciate being here and seeing all the work you do. So thank you.
Thank you.
But I do, one other concern. She has till July, no, wait, because he did this, took things away, Mr. Hauser, on July twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen. So do we not have till July twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, to file that claim?
We, that's what we.
That's what I thought. Thanks, guys.
Now, Mr. Austin, did your department ever do a weeds-only abatement notice on this case?
Dave Austin, Chief Field Inspector. Yes, that's true. It's likely that that notice did come about from that, that day that I was there on June first. And the reason being is that when I was there, the backyard was once again a jungle. And I knew that when we got in there, that we would waylay the backyard. You could not move anywhere back there without the vegetation being gone. And so it made sense to write it up for the weeds also. They would be abated at the same time, basically.
Okay. Well, um.
I don't think she understands that there's two separate, you know, and that.
I want to thank.
The original one started in December.
We're not going to have back and forth, back and forth. We'll be here till ten o'clock at night, and it's not going, it's just going to be circular. Why don't you sit down? To the extent that it's been alleged that there's been photo shopping, I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty bizarre. I'm just going to say, you, you will, you will, through your claim process, if you go into litigation, have every right to examine the digital formatting of those photographs. And you will have the right to examine under oath those people and, and have your representatives cross-examine them. But I will also say this. I presided over the Board of Equalization meeting at which she presented. And there was no one on this, this council that's sitting as the Board of Equalization that was laughing at Ms. Russo or were doing anything but treating her with respect. So to the extent that that's been said, that is false. That is false. That didn't happen. That's, that's imaginative. That's imagination. And, and so this council in, in, takes a lot of time, a lot of effort to three people who come before it, to allow them to state their case. And we don't have to call people up after the public hearing is closed. We do that out as courtesy, so people know that they've been heard. At some point, though, when things become circular, like they've become now, we cut it off, because it's not going anywhere. Your right to seek damages for the property that was taken, you believe wrongfully, won't be addressed by this body. It'll be addressed over in the other building.
So a rough estimate, we figure somewhere in the price range of $760 to $8.50, depending on how much time is involved. Anytime that there's a complaint, that you know there's going to be office time, there's going to be an inspection, there's going to be a re-inspect, there's notices. In the dealings with Ms. Russo, typically, things go on much longer, much longer, which is why in the past, oftentimes, these were closed, these matters were closed. She simply wore the inspector out. This time, he crossed his Ts, he dotted his Is, and he saw through to the end. He took good records, because we knew that we were going to wind up here eventually.
What are we looking at for cost? Give me a ballpark.
I would say, I would say less than $10,000, for as far back as my records go. Less than $10,000.
More than $5, less than $10?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. There are no more lights? Next item.
Item 63, in ordinance to approve an amendment to the lease agreement with Husker Hawkeye Distributing, Inc., to use and occupy the premises for the location of the Omaha Police Department Air Support Unit located at the North Omaha Airport.
Public hearing agenda, item number 63 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 64, in ordinance to approve an agreement with the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce for three years for the REACH program.
Public hearing agenda, item number 64 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello.
And thank you for waiting, Ms. Winsley Durand.
Absolutely. Winsley Durand, Greater Omaha Chamber, 808 Conagra Drive.
Thank you. Just here to answer any questions we might have? Or do you have a presentation?
I had a presentation, but if somebody has questions, I am happy to answer them.
We have nowhere to go. We don't have much.
I think we've had, we could forego the presentation. I think we know enough about it. But if any council members have any questions? Thank you. And thank you for waiting around. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Just to be official. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Non-action items, items 65 through 95, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and revote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Motion adjourned. Second roll call.
Festerson. Harding. Jerome. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Meeting is adjourned at 5:33.
Thank you for not making the presentation.